Good afternoon, members. Good afternoon to the executive president and to all the people that are coming in online. At the outset, I'm just going to call on Mr Kilfeather to go through the COVID procedure today as we're still in level five restrictions.
Caherlock members, the national standard operating guidance for the attendance of council meetings provide that all an attendance being formed at the start of the meeting of the COVID-19 control measures in place. I'd like to draw your attention to a few issues. Each person attending this meeting in person should have completed a COVID declaration form before entering the room. These forms will also serve as a record of attendance for contact tracing purposes if required. This meeting room has been prepared in accordance with the standard operating guidance. Face coverings must be worn by all attendees when entering and leaving the room. There should be no congregating in the building before or after the meeting. A one-way system is in place for entering and exiting the room, and the exit will be via the side door. In compliance with the recommendations in the standard operating guidance, the meeting time will not exceed one hour 55 minutes. Attendees must adhere at all times to the two metre physical distancing and follow the public health advice in relation to hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. A response plan is in place in the event that an attendee at the meeting feels unwell or is displaying possible COVID-19 symptoms. An isolation room has been provided. If anyone feels unwell during the meeting, you should alert myself or Kevin, and you will be escorted to the isolation room. Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Mr Kilfeather. Members, with your cooperation, as today is the last meeting for me, is Caherlock, I'm going to try and get through the agenda, so I'm going to ask people to be as brief as possible. And with your cooperation, we'll get through this, that whoever's the incoming here, they'll be starting on a new agenda. Can I just ask all the members that are coming in online to maybe go on mute? And any of the members that are in the chamber, if you're speaking, just to put on your microphone so that the people coming in virtually can hear. So we'll get through with a fairly long agenda, and we'll get through it as quickly as we can. First item, item number one, to note minutes of the CPG meeting held on the 26th. Second item, to note minutes of a meeting of Sligo Borough Municipal District held on the 15th of March 2021. Oh, sorry, propose on the first one for the CPG, councillor Gibbons, and I can second him on that. Sorry, item number two, the minutes of the Sligo Borough meeting held on the 15th of March, proposed councillor Gibbons, seconded by councillor Gino Boyle. Item three, to note minutes of the Sligo Drumchair Municipal District meeting held on the 15th of March, councillor Fox proposed, can I get a second there? Councillor Healy, thank you. Item number four, to confirm minutes of the ordinary meeting of Sligo County Council, councillor O'Grady, councillor Taylor, thank you. Item number five, councillor O'Grady, and I get a second there, councillor Bree, thank you. Item number six, to note minutes of the Procedures Committee meeting, councillor O'Boyle and councillor O'Grady. Item number seven, to confirm minutes of the adjourned councillor O'Grady, councillor Bree, to appoint representative to the SBC One, proposed councillor Bree, seconded by councillor, do you know, or sorry councillor Arthur Gibbons. Number nine, to note audit accounts of the Sligo bids, noted. Item number 10, to propose, can I get a second there for item, thank you, councillor O'Boyle. Item number 11, to approve, in accordance with section one, to councillor Bree, and can I get a second there, councillor Fox, councillor Fox, thank you, Bree, and councillor. Item number 12, Del C D C Annual Report, councillor Fox and councillor Taylor, thank you. Number 13, to approve councillor O'Boyle, councillor Gibbons. Number 14, I'd propose that one myself, sorry, oh yeah, is this, yeah, someone just coming in online, can you turn off your microphone, there's someone that there's an echo coming back. Councillor Clark wants a second, that one. Number 14.
Yes, John, thank you.
Thank you, and councillor Clark. Number 15, councillor Taylor, and I'll second that one. Number 16, to the Dopside County Council Dr. Daniel Report, I'd propose that, councillor Taylor. Number 17, to note monthly manager support, noted, okay. Deferred motions, councillor Queenan, I think he's deferring this, are you online there, councillor Queenan? No, no, so we'll have to defer. Number 19, we'll have to defer as well. Councillor Gilroy isn't in yet, so if he comes in, we'll, oh yeah, we can come back to them. Councillor Walsh, is councillor Walsh online?
Caherlock, I'm happy to defer us in the interest of the meeting.
Lovely, thanks councillor Walsh. Number 22, councillor Maguire, not there, so we'll defer. Councillor Gilroy, we'll have to come back to. Number 24, councillor Casterley, can I get a second there? Councillor Fox.
I'll defer that one.
Thank you, thank you. The second one, 25.
Yeah, just I'd like to, I'd like to welcome.
Second. Sorry, go ahead, Marie.
Just, I'd like to welcome the report and thank the staff for their work to date. It's a very important historical structure, and I am looking forward actually to hearing the outcome of the meeting between the NGA, the National Grave Association, and Sligo County Council. The report is very comprehensive, very positive, and it's great that there's actually going to be movement on it. I know, I do note that in the report, it said that resources are limited, but at the same time, hopefully that there are, there's funding available there in some pot or some stream in the future that we can access now that the communication has been, has been started between the National Grave Association and the council. So I'd just like to thank Siobhan Ryan, the heritage office there, and everybody else associated with that. Thank you.
Councillor Fox, you second?
Yeah, just a supportive motion.
Councillor Healy?
Yeah, just a supportive motion, and also to say that a lot of work has been gone on in the community in relation to Tealent Monument, and we have worked very closely with Sligo County Council and the National Grave Authority, and as I says, hopefully we'll, over the next couple of weeks, we'll have some news to give. I want to thank Tom Kilfeather, and I also want to thank everyone, Sinead, Siobhan Ryan, for the great work that they have done in helping us get to where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion 26, councillor Clark.
Caherlock, is the report?
The second there, councillor O'Boyle. I think, was the report issued in that, Mr?
Yes, Caherlock, there was a report issued, I can read it out if.
Did you get that councillor Clark?
Yeah, I didn't actually, I can't open it.
Right.
If it's brief, John.
Yeah, no problem. So just, the motion is that the council declares a housing emergency and calls the minister to declare a national emergency, and the bit that I've reported on is in relation to the current position regarding the housing waiting list numbers and the number of emergency houses, housing available for domestic violence. So there are 1521 households on the housing waiting transfer list as of the 1st of June. There's a breakdown provided there, 763 of those are in HAP or are HAP accommodated and approved for transfer, 202 are RAS tenants approved for transfer, and there's 556 net needs. The council does not have specific housing provision for domestic violence victims who become homeless where appropriate, and following assessments, they can be placed in private emergency accommodation if there are no other options available. There are domestic violence advocacy services out there, such as Divas, that have established safe houses, that's the report, Chair, thanks.
Thanks, Mr Moore, and just I want to be brief today, that's in us, but it's a fact now that we're spending more money on HAP than we are in building houses. And I think that if this government listen to the IRA and double their funding for housing and give the money to the excellent team we have here in the housing section in Sligo County Council, they'll build houses, they'd build houses. The current situation in relation to domestic violence is that they have to go to Airbnb to get accommodation, which is unacceptable. And there is no doubt that we have a housing crisis, and I'd call on the government to treat it as such and double the funding, build the houses, there's too many people on the waiting list. And we look back a couple of short years and see all the ghost estates, and we handed over all our estates to the pension funds that made billions. Did they not know back then that we needed 33,000 houses a year to build in this country? They just sold us down the drain, they sold a whole generation of people into poverty, and the squeezed middle that has been talked about so much, the guards, the nurses and so on, are now not in a position to build houses because of the shortage of houses and the cost of mortgages and the government position on it. So it's on hand, and it needs to be addressed. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor O'Boyle, second.
Thank you, Chair, and just in support of the motion, and it's timely, especially with the domestic violence, and numbers of houses available here, is it possible that the council could try to acquire some domestic violence units? Because I think one of the closest is nearly up in Tabor Carey, you know, there is a handful around town, but I think more needs to be done for people who are in domestic violence issues. So if the council could try, or if there's, I don't know if there's any funding, or if there's a lot of funding available in Dublin to try and acquire any units. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Healy.
I just want to support the motion and say there's been people that are in domestic violence, the most important thing is a safe house for them. And I think there's a duty here in us, here as councillors and the local authorities, that we provide something like this. I also agree with councillor Clark in relation to the 763 people that's on HAP, it's only a stick and plaster. We've seen it in every town and village where we have houses rented out, where people come into them and stay in them and build up community spirits and everything else, yet they have this worry over their head, will I be put out of the house, or are they selling the house? So it's about time that we stepped up to the American, start building houses, and take back the land that we own and start building for the people that we represent. Thank you.
And I'd also like to support the motion, the housing crisis is a shocking indictment of the present government and the previous Fianna Fáil, Fine Gael and Labour administrations. Unless there's a radical change in the direction of housing policy, this crisis is going to continue, it's going to deepen, and it's going to worsen. Caherlock, in 1975, local authorities built 8,794 new homes when resources were scarce. The latest figures show that councils built less than 1,000 homes in 2019 during the biggest housing crisis in our history. And this is because the government has outsourced housing to private developers who seek high prices and profits. I think we need to invest in building high-quality public housing on public land to solve the crisis. And the state owns enough public land to build over 100,000 new homes through a massive local authority-led housing programme. And unless the state moves now, this crisis will worsen. Thank you, Caherlock.
Thank you, councillor O'Grady.
I would like to support the motion too, and it is a huge crisis and has really to be declared a national emergency. I also would support councillor Clark's request that we ask the government to double the funding that's available for the building of houses, and we know in this council what we're capable of doing as regards building. I think the last big estate that was built was Seaview Park, but we've just to look on the Strand Hill Road, Father Flanagan Terrace, Ross's Point Road, and see the excellent work that this council can do and has provided. And I think those small developments is better for people than being in a big developments. But I find it hard to sit here and listen that Fianna Fáil hadn't built, you know, come up to the mark, maybe not so now, but I was reared in a house that was supplied by Fianna Fáil government at the time, in the early 50s. And if you look at Dooley Park or Martin Savage Terrace and Tracy Avenue and Jinx's Avenue, St Joseph's and all those, they were built when there was no money in the country, and they were built by Fianna Fáil governments. And Fianna Fáil has been known as the government who supplied housing for the working men in the past. Now, I have to agree, there is not enough being done now, but we have to reflect back as well and acknowledge the work that has been done. We can play around and saying, you know, that very little is being done. Yes, I do agree, but a huge amount was done, and I've said it in this chamber before, my own mother and father, when they got their house on Tracy Avenue, they would tell you it was like winning the sweeps at that time, to get a home with a bathroom or whatever. So Fianna Fáil have a history of providing homes, but we haven't lived up to it as we should in the last, in the last few years. And certainly, this council has proven to what they build is excellent, and I would certainly like to see funding, extra funding being provided, that we can go and have a look at the needs of our people on the housing list.
Councillor Casterley, you have a hand up?
Thank you, I'll be brief as well, I'd just like to support councillor Clark and everything that he has said, and just to acknowledge the work as well that the Sligo County Council have done and the high standard of housing that they have provided, and I do agree that, that local authorities should be given the money throughout the country and to fast track, to cut down on all the different layers and layers of bureaucracy and red tape through every single government. We're able to do it, we've shown that we can do that, and to, to give the funding directly back, we have the staff and we have the expertise to give the funding directly back to the local authorities. And I would also like to just acknowledge the Domestic Violence Advocacy Service, who have done fantastic work and continue to do fantastic work, particularly during COVID, the Sligo Rape Crisis Centre, and all that is in collaboration with the local authority there and the Guards and voluntary work, and voluntary groups as well. So there is huge amount of work and huge amount of support, more support is needed always, but I think that Divas and the Rape Crisis Centre working in collaboration with the local authority and the Guards are really doing a fantastic job as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibbons.
I'd like to support the motion, I have to say in reality to it, I'm looking at the likes of the funding that was cut over the years in relation to Davison and all the frontline services, I think it was a bloody well a disgrace. I'm looking at the housing situation and accommodation for victims of domestic violence, I think myself that it's no different than it was 25, 30 years ago, it hasn't progressed. And in relation to the houses and what the different governments done over the years, realistically, you look at it, I think the last major development that we've seen within Sligo Borough would have been the Moorboy project, and it's built in that area, and it's still carrying on in that area. Anything else that kind of came out after that wasn't of great significance, they were small projects, and I think myself that's where the government lost the run of itself. Because what the government actually done at the time, they looked at the likes of the guy with the money, and the guy that could invest in building houses and building houses, the banks at the time thrown money at ordinary 5eights and often the mortgages that they couldn't even afford, and I ignore myself through these local authorities, that a number of people would have availed in that these local authority had to step in and nearly pick up kind of the shattered pieces after, where families just couldn't afford to keep their roofs over the ride and things like that. But I think that they really lost the run of themselves, and they lost the run of the ordinary working class person, and it's still happening out there. I even seen a programme on there one night in relation, a teacher she was on, and his wife was a psychologist, they couldn't afford a house in Dublin, two professional people, like what's wrong now? They've been no different than anybody else, they got up for their work in the morning, the same as everybody else, they put their food on the table and things, but they were both in good positions, and I think the government has totally lost run of itself. And what this country needs, it needs to get back to what we were in the line of building houses in the 30s and the 40s, let the local authorities do it. I think one of the biggest disasters happened within this country, I suppose, had to be the dole away of the town and the borough councils, I think myself that was massive, it was really a kick in the teeth to that industry, because even within Sligo, Sligo Town would have been the hub for the North West, it meant that I had a council that sat there, that pushed these things, the housing needs the whole time, instead of like, instead of the burden that's on the council today, because it's a full county thing, instead of just being a town. And I felt that the independent voice that the borough council had within this town, I think it was a disaster the day that we lost it in relation to housing. I think as well as that, I think we're going too silly with our buildings, we've seen it with the children's hospital in Dublin and the consultation firms, how much money they got, it's gone the same with ordinary development of ordinary building project or anything else. I remember the time there was money was allocated, and it was down to the local authority overseeing builders, put in there, they carried out the work, and houses was built. I'm sure that when Moorboy Estate and Tricia Avenue, Jinx's Avenue, the likes of those were built, I guarantee there was no consulting firms, there was men that knew what they were at, that was the reality, the local authority overseeing, provided the funding, put in the builders, and not saying that the builders worked for them, the builders, it was within a contract basis, but the one thing about it, houses was provided, and provided, and I can guarantee you, if you put pound for euro today, and percentage wise, they were built for an awful lot less than what they would be today if you take percentages and the way that things are. So I would, I'd like to support the motion, I know it's gone a wee bit off the tracks, and I think a lot of this did because of the whole fact that there's not enough accommodation there for victims of domestic violence, even though we have massive buildings lying idle. I know that councillor O'Grady brought up in relation to the one down in Finnesclen near beside Lidl, and I know before that that a number of our councillors, Declan Bree had brought it up, and Chris McManus and Sean McManus in their time, that it would have been an ideal, because that was belongs to the Department of Justice at the time, and because it wasn't being used and the money that they got from the state, it'd have been an ideal building for the deal with the likes of that. And I still think we should be looking at the likes of that, and that's where money is needed. Thanks very much.
Thanks councillor Gibbons, councillor Fox, and I'll finish on this motion.
Yeah, just briefly to support the motion, yeah, more money should be allocated for housing for people, so you know, in domestic violence situations, and they should be supported during their time of difficulty. Housing generally is a big issue, supply of housing, and it's about supply, supply, so we should make more arrangements to supply more housing and the appropriate planning provisions. It's a slower process, but we should focus more on the provision of housing. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, members, moving on, motion number 27, councillor McSharry, can I have a second there?
Caherlock, just before you take that, I'm conscious that councillor Gilroy wishes to speak on that motion, so out of courtesy, I know he is on his way to the meeting, perhaps after you take councillor Gilroy's motion, you might take this motion, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you, yeah, we'll keep moving through the agenda, so come back. Motion number 28, councillor Clark.
I defer, Chair, I defer.
Thank you, thank you, we're getting, getting through them. My own motion is just a second or anyone, it's just, thanks councillor Taylor, just to send off a letter on the delays, thank you. Motion number 30, councillor Casterley, can I get a second there? Councillor Fox? Councillor Casterley, motion 30.
Yeah, Caherlock, I'll second that.
Yeah, thank you, I'd just like to welcome the report and welcome the surveys and the work that has taken place already, and I look forward to hearing more. I was just going to ask a question, but I don't want to hold up the meeting, but if I could just maybe find out some further information about what funding streams, Imar, whenever you get a chance, what funding streams are available there, or what, what fund is going to be accessed for, to make sure that the projects are delivered? Thanks, it's just, they've been on the agenda for a long time, and there has been some announcements before about footpath improvement works and funding for those, so I'm just conscious of the fact that, that it's been on the agenda for a good few years now, and I'll be hoping that we, we would get works done, because with all the different works that's been carried out in Grange and improvement works in Clifney as well, that I think it's time that the footpaths were finally finished off and improved properly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox, you second it?
Yeah, just to support the motion, yeah, and it's long overdue, the footpath improvement scheme there in Clifney, especially the north side of Clifney, I would say, the restaurant there is badly needed, so yeah, just to support the motion, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Motion number 31, councillor O'Boyle.
Thank you, Chair. For those that didn't know the Georgie Gorman, during his time at St Anne's Youth and Community Centre, and subsequently the Avalon Centre, the Cranmore Community and the wider Sligo Community, Georgie was a role model and an advocate, and a champion for countless children, myself included, young people and families that he had worked with. His tireless working commitment ensured that the Avalon Centre had the most thought after summer camps in the region, and again, when I was in the North Side Community Centre, we'd often train, challenge Cranmore, but couldn't get anywhere near them, thanks to Georgie. Our shows have a note, year after year, and multitudes of children and young people attending the weekly youth clubs and special needs programmes. Georgie's gentle manner, big smile and hearty laugh greeted everyone who was privileged to encounter him. His years of dedication and allegiance to his community and Sligo should never be forgotten, and I hope in some way we can honour his memory by building on the foundations of his incredible work, so I ask the council to forward this motion on to the Place Names Committee.
Okay, councillor Bree.
In seconding that, I would say that Georgia Maguire played a significant role as a youth leader and as a community worker in the east ward of Sligo for over three decades. His work with young people in St Anne's Youth Club and the Avalon Centre was certainly acknowledged by the people of Sligo in the period following his, his passing. His commitment to young people and the passion for all he did was noteworthy. He made an impact on so many people's lives over those three decades, or even practically four decades. His endless energy, his generosity, his enthusiasm and his sense of fun was, will certainly be missed. Sligo owes him a debt of gratitude, and in this context, I think it would be fitting that an appropriate location or property or venue would be named in his honour, and I believe this will and should be considered by the Place Names Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibbons.
Caherlock, I'd like to be proudly, I'd like to be associated with this motion. I think myself the work that Georgie had done over beyond in the Avalon Centre, which was previously St Anne's, it went unrecognized by the community of Sligo. The only people that really ever knew what Georgie had done was those that worked in the Avalon Centre, and the outside bodies that was involved in different community centres and different organisations. A number of people rang me after Georgie had died after his funeral, and they had asked me, that it would be very fitting for a plaque or something was to go up in Sligo in relation to Georgie for the work that he'd done. It was actually, he says at the time that he wasn't one of these people that went out with his chest out, and says, oh, look what I done, I'm a great fellow. He dealt with individual children and their problems, and he put them on the straight and narrow, and a lot of youngsters are so thankful to them today, to Georgie. And as I said, he never stuck his chest out, if it was anybody else that was out there, they'd be looking for the recognition that goes with it. And I know myself, even through the Centre for Independent Living and Irish Wheelchair Association, some of the members through them organisations, couldn't say enough about Georgie, but everybody will support in Sligo, will support the naming of, especially I think it's very fitting, of the park being called after him, because the reality to it, a monument is something that people will walk by and won't even read or whatever else, but it's a lovely thing that'll always be known, and I hope the Place Names Committee does adopt it, as the Georgie Maguire Park, I think myself that it's a fantastic idea, very proud to be associated, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Healy.
Yeah, I just want to be associated with Georgie, it's like so many people that we have in our areas, that when they're, when they go, then we appreciate what they've done. And as it says, my young one worked in the Avalon Centre there, and she says Georgie was second to none, he had a great way with them, great way, it's not too often you come across people like that. We have, we have a legend like that ourselves out in Calounie with the likes of Jenny Banks, but them people only come up, and as it says, they're never in it for themselves, they're in it what they can do to their areas, and I think it's only right and proper that people like this is held in high regard, and that something is left there. I mean, every child will have something in them, in their heart and soul remembering Georgie, but this is something that the council can do, and I praise councillor Gino Boyle for putting it forward.
Thank you, councillor O'Grady.
Yeah, I think this is an excellent motion put forward by councillor O'Boyle. George, he was one of Sligo's unsung heroes, and I think the essence of his goodness was that he had nature for people, he had huge nature and respect for people, and I think that was the driver behind everything that George did. I was speaking to a very progressive young man in Sligo in his 30s the other day, and he told me the story of how George had kept him on the right path, and he said only for him, he might have went another way. So that's, that says it all, to me, that says it all, how many more people are there that George Maguire kept and looked after and kept on the right path. So certainly, I wholeheartedly support the motion that Sligo County Council and Place Names Committee consider calling Cleaver Park after the late George Maguire.
Thank you, councillor Tom McSharry? Thank you. Councillor Tom McSharry?
Thank you Cahill, I'll be brief. I want to be associated with a very eloquent and accurate, uh, tribute to George. And I do support councillor O'Boyle's motion. I think it is an excellent motion. Uh, and it is true, anybody that knew him, there was a lot of young people that were just veering off course, and Georgie brought them back. And I think Arthur Gibbons hit the nail on the head. He was never a man for, for fuss or fanfare, uh, but certainly does deserve to be recognised because he did make a massive impact at Sligo. He comes from a very, uh, big, uh, well-known and respected family.
Thank you. Councillor Tom Fox?
Yeah, I would too like to be associated with this motion. I knew Georgie, um, went to school with him indeed. He was a gentleman over the years. And, uh, he helped a lot of, um, youth in Sligo Town over the many years that he was involved, um, there in Avalon and that. And, you know, if you met him out socially, he was always a good character. And, uh, you know, he, he, this is well deserved. And I will be supporting it as a member of the Place Names Committee. Um, and may George rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Okay, moving on. So motion number thirty two, councillor Gino Boyd, you have a second there? Councillor Healy?
Just to thank everybody for your support on the last motion as well. It's greatly appreciated. Um, to Irish Anti-Fracking Movement, send an official request on April twenty second to the Irish Government, asking it to table a resolution to the United Nations calling for a global ban on fracking. Ireland implemented a nationwide ban on hydraulic fracking in twenty seventeen on the grounds of public health and environment. We should be of the opinion that as a country with a law and with a ban on fracking, it is our duty to show solidarity with communities that live or are threatened by fracking, such as those in Northern Ireland, Pennsylvania, Texas, Namibia, Botswana, Argentina and Colombia, to name a few. And to show compassion and global leadership in climate change mitigation to the communities worsted by climate breakdown. Ireland's foreign policy objectives include to clear prioritisation of human rights and climate action at UN level. As a key tenant of its security council membership, in its role as co-chair with NIDR, of the United Nations Security Council and formal expert group on climate and security, should be aligned by the proposal with Ireland for this, uh, adoption of UN resolution. So I would be hopeful that the motion gets supported.
Thank you. Councillor Healy?
Yeah, I just want to support the motion. And, uh, we know ourselves here, the threat that we had with fracking and how this council came together and made sure that was put under, on our county development plan. It's important now that we also, uh, represent other countries that are facing the same thing. And, uh, as it says, fracking, it's not healthy, it's not wanted, and it should be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bray, would you like to?
Just, it's, we wouldn't be usually supporting the government on issues, but on this, on this particular one, we certainly welcome it. Because as you, as, as, as councillor Healy pointed out, this council was one of, the first councils in Ireland, once cert ban on fracking in the county development plan. And then we had legislation, government legislation banning fracking. And this is, uh, another progressive, uh, development. And, uh, I, I expect that the council will unanimously endorse this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, members. Yeah, we'll answer the motion. We're moving on. So to, uh, number thirty three, councillor Tom Fox. Um, can I get a second there?
I'll second that.
Okay, councillor Casterly, right? Are you happy enough with the?
Yeah, I'm happy with the report, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Just come in there for one second in relation to that, just to speak on it. It would be very quick. I'd want to support that motion of Tom Fox. And I do know that a number of people has been in contact, uh, over the last couple of years with the roads department of the council in relation to it. There's about on that Hazelwood Road as you're heading out towards past the Sommel, out as far as that junction at, between Hazelwood and Shaw's Lane. It's, uh, there's four grates in a row. And they're that, they're sunk three or four inches, one of them is. And I do know that a number of people, and especially, uh, people that maybe spend a lot of money on their cars and no profile wheels, have snapped wheels on it. And the danger is for the residents living out that area as they're coming back towards town. People going out there with very low profile wheels, they'll see the potholes at the last minute, or the sunken grates, they'll swerve to avoid them. And I can tell you this much, there is an accident going to happen unless them grates are real rows and them holes along the side of the grates are looked after. Thanks very much.
Okay. Thanks, members. Uh, moving on. So councillor Fox, motion thirty four, can I get a second there? Councillor Casterly? Councillor Fox, are you?
Yeah, just in relation to these two busy, um, villages, there, there's bad, these, um, vehicle activated speed signs are badly needed in both villages, um, because there's a huge problem with speeding and that. And I have the report back, I welcome the report from Tom Brennan. And, uh, hopefully we can move forward and have these provided, um, in the near future. Um, there at, at Ross's Point, as you come in, I know there was an issue there on the slip road. So this would enhance that issue as well, you know. So if you could have, um, make some sort of arrangements to have one, um, erected there. And secondly, at the approach road into Drumcliffe Village, it's a very, it's an extremely busy road. It's a national primary route, and it's badly needed also. And they are very effective on these main roads. People tend to, um, you know, notice them on the roads. And in the interest of public safety, they should be provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Casterly, you second it?
Yeah, just very briefly, I, I'd like to welcome that the motion, but also then these have been on the agenda for a while as well. And, uh, also, uh, looking for these speed signs going into the villages of Grange and Clifney as well. I know that they were passed, uh, a while ago. I know that funding was an issue at the time. But I'm just wondering if there's, again, I'm not looking for anything now, but if, can we just re-add it to the agenda at some stage that, uh, that there might be a follow-up on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, members. Thanks for that. Uh, councillor Gilroy?
Yeah, just again, to support it and that they're needed. And in fact, the, the, I had a motion in there a while ago about introducing a new type of signage, which, uh, which would actually cause the light to go red. They're in use throughout the continent, and they would solve the problems at both of the locations highlighted here, as well as at Grange and Clifney. Thank you.
Just a word of question, just a quick one, just, uh, the one in Ross's Point, at the moment, we know there's a survey going on there. Is there any chance that that could become, come on under, under that? Maybe we might get funding under that? Just wondering.
Okay, councillor Fox?
Yeah, just, and, and, and follow on to what councillor Healy said. I think they're needed, um, closer, closer to Sligo rather than closer to the village of, um, Ross's Point. Um, just before you turn up to Ballyhoolin there, it's, uh, they're badly needed there.
Thanks. Um, Ms Concanon, you'll take those on board, or is that okay?
Yep, that's fine. I have, I've taken, taken note of that, yes.
Okay, thank you, members, for that. Um, motion number thirty five?
I'll second that Cahill.
Uh, councillor Healy second, but councillor Gibbons?
Uh, yeah. The health centre in Calouni covers a large area of the local population, Ballistair, Baligholly, Vanator and Balinacara, and other many townlands. The centre provides a daycare service for the old and is a very busy centre. But there's ongoing issues with parking and the lack, and the lack of it at the centre. Uh, there's ground there to address the issue. At present, there is only one set down area for this, disabled pair, uh, spaces. And there is, uh, and there's, uh, the whole area, the cares can't park on the, uh, what's happening is cares are parking out on the main road. It's right beside the school. Come there at three o'clock, people can't come in or out. Uh, I'd old people and vulnerable people have to park them now further up the, up the town and walk down. And it's unacceptable. Uh, the HSE has ground there. This was raised before, a couple of years ago with, uh, with the HSE regarding that. They did carry out certain works at the time where they addressed the footpaths, where the wheelchairs were going in and out of it. But we're at a stage now where, um, where we're hoping to see our health centres open up in the next week or two. Uh, there is need for a set down area for the bus. There is need for extra, uh, disabled parking areas for people that stay there. And there is need for the public parking there as well. And I would ask as well that when it's noted at this meeting, that, uh, that they might look as well at providing, uh, a place, a little area there for the people that use the health centre, that on a good sunny days that they're able to come out, there's a little area there and create a little area for them that they're able to sit out on a, on a warm day as well. So as it says, this is an ongoing issue. I think that, uh, the HSE needs to address this and not be leaving it, uh, to Sligo County Council. They have the ground there, then they can do the work on it. So I'd be asking them to, and I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll call on councillor Gilroy and, and also councillor Bray. They might bring it up as well at the next meeting and highlight the fact that it is, that it's, it's a serious issue now in Calouni. And I'd hope that you'd bring it to their attention as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gibbon?
I would ask as well in relation to it, that when the right to the HSE, and that a survey would be carried out in relation, I'll tell you exactly why. And the survey would want to be carried out when the schools are there. There's no sense in going in there when the schools are on all this. My grandkids go to that school. And there was one stage that was known as the girls' school, and the boys' school was up the other side of the, of the village. And today and now, it's mixing, it's great thing to see, there's actually in need for one school to amalgamate the whole lot. But while this is going on, while school time is on it, and councillor Healy is one hundred percent right, when two o'clock comes in the day, and again at three o'clock, and that's on such a bad corner there on that road, that the traffic, some of it is, uh, two or three in depth, because it's because of the extra traffic that's there in the health centre. And as well as that, as far as I remember, and I stand to be corrected, the community welfare officer also operates out of that building, building. And a lot of people that has to depend on maybe go to see a community welfare officer, the parking that they have, as I says, it's out onto the roads and that's where it is. And especially if the day is anyway wet at all, everybody seems to think that they have to take their car that short journey. But it is something I would urge the HSE is to carry out a survey on. And it might do no harm for them to tie in with this local authority as well, just to look at the main road as well, and see is there any way that we might be able to provide PR parking ourselves for in relation to the school, for the volume of traffic that turns to the school which is adjacent to it. Because one is affecting the other. Thanks very much.
Thank you councillor Walsh.
Yeah, thanks Cahill. Like, uh, I too will be, uh, brief. I support the motion and I will go much further. Um, parking at the health centre is one issue, but parking in Calouni, uh, as a centre, i- is a much bigger issue. Uh, and there's a huge lack of parking in Calouni at the minute. Um, you know, there has been four or five motions down now in relation to Calouni being made a one-way system. Uh, but that'll only work i- if there's additional parking being made available, um, uh, on both sides, uh, of Calouni Town. There's over two thousand people living in it. There's a planning permission gone in for, um, a large development, um, in the last two weeks in Calouni. Uh, so, uh, while there's large developments and Calouni being a centre that's expected to grow by twenty five percent, uh, by, um, in twenty thirty, um, infrastructure is an improvement in terms of parking, um, and so forth. So, uh, I fully support the motion and, um, hopefully, um, hopefully the application to the U R D F will be successful, uh, this year.
Yeah, thanks councillor Walsh. And I'd also like to support councillor Healy on that. I know one or two people in Balinacara have mentioned it to me that would use that. So I think maybe if myself, councillor Gilroy and councillor Bray are on the, the regional health forum, if it needs to be, the three of us will support that if it needs to be.
I don't know, they didn't know you.
No, no, that's, yeah, just we'll all, we'll all support it. It's, and as I think as councillor Gibbons has said, it's imperative that if the survey is done, it's done when there is, the, the peak times, not off peak. So we support that.
Just one part, the survey has been done.
All right.
I met with the, with the man, he's retired now, that did the work on the footpaths and everything else. So they're aware of what's happening. It's going on that long number of years. The man has retired. There was a survey carried out, as far as I'm aware of. And there was funding meant to come available for it.
And are you happy to have done that, the, the busy time, like?
Oh, yeah, well, he lived.
He knows the problem.
He knows the ground. He lives in the area.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Okay, we'll all, we'll all support that.
It'd be no harm, a second.
Give it another, yeah.
If I can, yeah, thank you.
No problem, we'll all support that.
Thank you.
Okay, members, thank you. Um, I'm going to revert back to motion number twenty seven, councillor Tom McSharry, because his second there was unavailable, but he's in the room now. Um, second councillor McSharry?
Thank you Cahill. Um, with the huge success of the vaccination programme, and with both government and Dr Tony Houlihan, uh, last night actually celebrating how well it is going and advocating an open summer with business, shops, restaurants, et cetera, all opening up, I feel it is the right time to remove some, if not all, of the bollards at the shorefront in Strand Hill, specifically for the benefit of the elderly in our community and those with mobility issues. Traditionally Cahill, look, every weekend elderly people could park up, enjoy the ocean, have an ice cream, et cetera, at the shorefront in Strand Hill. It is now time to accommodate those people who are now fully vaccinated and whom have spent most of the lockdown unfortunately kept up in their homes. Young and fit people can park at the big car park and walk to the shorefront, but the elderly and those with mobility issues simply cannot. I have read the report, and I am a little bit disappointed with the report, because I feel it seeks to hide behind an argument for social distancing, an extra car park spaces provided in the big car park is the answer. The extra car parking spaces in the big car park do absolutely nothing to accommodate elderly people and those with mobility issues getting to the shorefront. The argument for social distancing, I feel does not stand up either, as the gravel walkway, for example, from the shorefront to the beach, and indeed the footpaths to and from the shorefront to the big car park are both smaller in size to the footpath at the shorefront. Also, Sligo thankfully has the lowest numbers in Ireland and has stated most if not all elderly people and vulnerable people are vaccinated at this time. Finally Cahill, as a member of this local authority, who currently are depriving the elderly of longstanding traditional traits to Strand Hill, I want to wholeheartedly and most sincerely apologise to those people. Sligo County Council have, I feel, indeed got this issue wrong. And I want to acknowledge the many hundreds of people who have contacted me, supporting my campaign. And I do want to vote on this if it's not unanimously adopted. Thank you Cahill.
Thank you councillor Gilroy.
Uh, again, to support it, I, I've been approached by a number of people specifically who work with people with intellectual disabilities and drive, uh, small buses. The, the, the problem is that people are parking parallel now. And I believe parking spaces have been put in parallel to the bollards, which is making the space even tighter for them to, to get around with these buses. And all it takes is one person to do something wrong, and they end up having to reverse all the traffic back out as far as the other car park. It's just not working. Um, there's, there's, an awful lot of people are parking illegally out there, and there doesn't seem to be anything being done about it. There, there doesn't seem to be people walking inside the bollards in the direction that they're supposed to. And these people, um, without kind of getting into too close a, a personal thing with them, some of them cannot be let out of the bus in a busy place like that. If they were, and I know there's disabled spots available, but the disabled spots get taken up fairly fast. And sometimes it's just a drive out and a drive around and see the beach and things like that. And if they can get a place to pull in, it's so much good for their mental health and keeps them steady and all the rest for the rest of the day. So I think we owe those people who are the most vulnerable in our society, that we look at this, certainly reexamine it and see if there's any possibility of moving some of them back or taking them out completely to, uh, to, to be able to deliver for these, the most vulnerable in society, to, uh, the best we can for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Councillor Gibbons?
I'd be very careful in relation to this. And I know it might be everybody's choice. But at the end of the day, we're elected representatives. We're not the professionals. We're not the people that's giving the advice in relation to it. I mean, we don't have a meeting here unless that the COVID guidelines are all read out and whatever else. All these things was put into place to deal with COVID, end of it. I do not think that this council and us, our councillors, are qualified enough to turn around and start taking decisions like that. Because when does it stop? I mean to say, we're still at a level five. The level five has not dropped. They may have relaxed a bit on the likes of the pubs and things like that, but we're still at level five. And what has got us this far is everybody has abided by what was put in the place. And they followed, uh, the scientist's advice and Dr Tony Houlihan's advice and whatever. And that's exactly what worked. And I am think myself, or I think myself, we are setting a very dangerous precedent. And I do not think that we should be discussing this here. If that's the case, why aren't we discussing the other things that's out there? Why aren't we discussing the whole thing about open the pubs? Sure, everybody's clamoured together outside the pub to the point that we're not doing it, even though we know it's financially devastating on the country. But in relation to this, I think this is setting a very, very dangerous precedent. I do understand where everybody is coming from. There's people out there with disabilities that cannot get down as far as the beach. But realistically, those people had to stay in home over the last twelve months to follow the guidelines. This is put in place. As I said, we don't, we all might agree with it. We don't like to see these bollards. Even the ones that went up around the town here, the Sligo bit was involved in the businesses in Sligo and Sligo County Council, were put in for a reason. And if you look at it, and if you're ever sitting in traffic, the way that they are used, even the ones that's in the town, the bollards, personally myself, I do not want to touch this decision, one way or the other. I mightn't agree with the bollards being there, but they're there for a reason.
Vote against the motion.
No, excuse me, excuse me. I will not vote against the motion. I am turning around. I am saying, what makes you such a professional or anybody else? We are following the guidelines. The same as we come into this building, we are following the guidelines. We have not got that front door down there opened and allowing people in. We have not got that front door down there opened and allowing people in to the housing end, to pay their rent and things like that. Now, as I says in relation to, I don't like it, but I do not feel under any circumstances that we are professional enough to make that decision. That has nothing to do with us, we're politicians. These were put in, these were safety measures put into place. But we're setting a very dangerous precedent here today. And I don't think I'd ask councillor McSharry to remove that motion.
No, I'll address your feelings.
Yeah, yes, councillor McSharry.
I, I've outlined my arguments against the report. I do think we're more than qualified, I think we're public representatives, I think our function is to represent the public. I have outlined the reasons I think this should be removed. If councillor Gibbons, and I appreciate his concerns, I listen to his points, fortunately and thankfully, we live in a democracy, calling for a vote on this, Kehirlik, I think I'm entitled to it. As public representatives, I am entitled to a vote. Councillor Gibbons disagrees with that, he has an option to abstain or vote against. Thank you, Kehirlik. We have a busy meeting, avoid us.
Thanks, yeah.
You are a public representative, but you are not a professional.
Okay, okay councillor.
That is the reality, that's the advice we're taking, it's from the professionals.
Can I bring councillor Bray in? Thank you.
Just some clarification, I'm just looking for, Kehirlik, the, the, the motion reads that Sligo County Council removed the ballards at the seafront in Strand Hill. Is that, is that a function for the councillors or is it an executive function? And secondly, just to clarify, is, is the motion because, is it calling for the immediate removal this weekend or is it in a few weeks' time? Because I'm looking at the report we've received and we're, we're being told that there will be an easing of restrictions with the safety and, and, and with the safety of the public in mind. And currently their best assessment of what is reasonable in these exceptional times is to leave the, is to leave the ballards in place. But that could change next week, I'm presuming, I, I, I'm not sure. But maybe we could have clarification from the top table, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bray, Mr Calfeather.
Kehirlik, I, I think the report is fairly clear. You know, we're 17 months into this now. Councillor McSharry referenced what Dr Houlihan said last night, and what he did basically say was, we're, we're getting through the vaccination programme, we're doing really well, we're nearly there. And on the, on the other hand, when I heard that report this morning, the next item on the news this morning was a survey that said 70% of people were nervous about engaging with people while they're out socially. So that's the dilemma we have at the moment. The actions that we are taking, not just in Strand Hill, in Ross's Point, in Ennis Groan, in Stretia, in all the locations in Sligo Town, are done in conjunction with the Gardaí. And they're our best assessment jointly as to what's appropriate at this particular time. And there's no intention of having those ballards there permanently in Strand Hill. We are reviewing things with the Gardaí on a weekly basis. And in relation to that, we will make whatever changes are required. I certainly would hope that over the next couple of months, we will be in a position to remove them. I can't say that for sure, but that's the position we would like to get to. But that's dependent on factors that are way outside of our control. And it, it's our best assessment, working in conjunction with the Gardaí, based on the advice that we receive. And councillor Gibbons summed it up, we're still in level five. That's the reality of it. You know, whether we think it's different or not, that's where we still are. And we just can't pretend that it's not there and, and wish it all away. You know, we're, we're being very, we're trying to be very practical about this right across, across the county. And it's not just about ballards, you know, we've put staff in all our tourist locations over the last number of weekends to keep the place clean. That's part of it as well, that's part of the response. We've taken action in relation to yellow lines in Strand Hill, that's part of the response. We had to take action in Stretia in relation to protecting the dunes, that's part of the response. And the ballards in Strand Hill and in Sligo Town are part of the response. You know, as things improve, hopefully there, we're, we're on the final path now, the measures will change again. And obviously we're, we'd like to be moving towards ease and everything, you know. So it's a fluid situation and it's, it's not, it's been done in conjunction with the best advice that we get and in consultation with the Gardaí. And we are meeting regularly with the Gardaí in relation to all the areas, and we will continue to do that. And whatever changes we consider appropriate between us will be put in place as soon as possible. Thank you, Kehirlik.
Thank you, Mr Calfeather. Any other members want to come in on this? I suppose, just councillor McSharry, just one question myself, and I suppose maybe it's just the sense from one or two of the speakers that have spoken, this is that I suppose time, we, it, it kind of can change weekly. Could we look possibly that this was brought to the next meeting, which is in July, which will only be two weeks away? I'm just thinking that would there be a change from the Gardaí in it? Because the only question I would have on this is, is there a certain amount of ballards we're calling for their removal of, or will it affect ballards that are in place anywhere else if these are voted on to be removed? Now, that's just my own question.
Thank you, Kehirlik. Sorry. And your diplomacy on this very important issue is greatly appreciated. Just to answer, I suppose, and it's not for me to ask for an answer for councillor Bray's motion, but just to clarify that, maybe Mr Calfeather can clarify, it is an executive function, isn't that correct? And it's an executive function taken in conjunction with a Gardaí economy, but it is an executive function, isn't that correct?
Kehirlik, apologies, I should have clarified that. It's an executive function in relation to that, it's an operational matter, an executive function, and we will do it at consultation with the Gardaí.
Yeah, well, is there, can I ask Mr Calfeather, is there a compromise scenario here? Because if there is, I will defer the motion for a month to July if I get assurances that if things improve for the better and the things, maybe through consultation with a Gardaí economy change, that there, there will be some compromise. Because I'm specifically looking to accommodate elderly people and those with mobility issues, which are not being accommodated at the moment. I think everybody will concede that point. But I will defer it if that, if there will be discussions and there will be some sort of compromise considered, because my information at the moment is that that's not the case.
Kehirlik, I think it's very unlikely that anything will change in the next six to eight weeks. That's been straight about it, been honest about it. If you're asking me my opinion, I think early September is the, probably the best scenario for significant change for a whole load of reasons. The summer is over, kids are going back to school, the crowds will be down, and, and they, I think, are relevant, you know. So I'm not going to pretend to councillor McSharry that something will be changing in two weeks' time, that, you know, that would be fair.
I appreciate Mr Calfeather's upfront and honest response. And on that basis, Kehirlik, I'm calling for a vote. People can make a decision on it, but I'm calling for a vote on this issue.
Amendment.
Sorry.
I want to propose an amendment.
Two, two people just want to come in on this. Yeah, councillor, greatly indicated first, sorry, and then councillor Bray.
Yes, as a representative for that area for many years, I certainly have been contacted by many of the people. I actually walk in Strand Hill most days, and it is an inconvenience, and we all respect that, that it is an inconvenience. But I think councillor Gibbons summed it all up, as, as the CE said, we're in level five. It is effective. I, I've sat and watched and tried to, tried to look to see is there anything we could do to make it more amenable for people? Because like councillor McSharry and councillor Gilroy, people have been in contact with me on, on the issue. And I have went to, at all times, explain to people that the council put it there for the safety of the people using Strand Hill. Definitely the path down from the car park is narrow on both sides, it's absolutely narrow. But I do think if we had in that space at the seafront for now, it may be a bigger issue. I have watched and sat and watched people parking in the disabled parking spaces, and it would shock you the amount of people that are parking in places that is reserved for people with mobility problems or with people with any kind of a disability. And I would ask that that would be monitored very, very closely. The other evening, the short space of an hour, I seen three different people, and in fact, I went to one of them and said, do you know, have you a disability pass to be there because of the issue? It's certainly a huge issue. I think this council will be very foolish, as councillor Gibbons said, to politicise it. It's an executive decision made by the executive with the Gardaí. Why is it made? Because we're in a level five pandemic, none of us likes it. There's not a councillor on this table is happy that you have to walk down from the car park to the seafront. I used to love to go and sit in the car, even if it was raining, and park and look out at the sea. None of us like it. But I think as a council, we'd be very foolish to politicise it. And I think it's important that, that we take very carefully what Mr Calfeather has said to us. We're level five pandemic, and as soon as, and I think Mr Calfeather has given us that assurance, that as soon as it can be lifted, it will be lifted. But I would appeal that the Gardaí would be notified that there's people using the spaces that are not for them. Donal, our councillor Gilroy, outlined there are people coming with disability, mini buses and, and people carriers. And I've seen them myself where they haven't been able to get in to the rightly space where they should have parked. So I certainly think I would follow the effort, you know, the advice. I would love to say, yes, open it up, take them down this evening, but I know I wouldn't be doing the right thing for the safety of the people who's going to use it and the safety of the people that I represent. Thank you, Kehirlik.
Thank you, councillor Bray.
Kehirlik, I, I'm proposing an amendment there, just to add a number of words to the motion. The words that I'm proposing we add is at the end of the motion, as soon as it is considered safe to do so. So an amended motion would read, that Sligo County Council removed the ballards at the seafront in the Strand Hill as soon as it, as it is considered safe to do so. And the motion is second, the amendment is seconded by councillor Boy.
I, I'll actually, Kehirlik, agree, agree to councillor Bray's amendment based. I think it is unfortunate that we might have waited weeks. I would ask, good office of, of Mr Calfeather and the staff who are working extremely hard, because I have consulted members of a Gardaí economy myself, and I, I do think people definitely, definitely want to see a solution here, because at the moment, I don't think it suits the needs of the elderly in our community and those with mobility.
Thank you councillor McSharry, and I think that that's an agree, we're, we're all agreed on that. Councillor Castley, have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak very briefly. I do appreciate that councillor McSharry is putting a hard face there. And, and it is, it is difficult, I'm not going to go over whatever he said, but I know that on the agenda for the joint police and committee next Friday, councillor Maguire has a fairly detailed motion submitted, looking for support from the Guards to help the volunteers and the people in the community in Strand Hill. That's, that's next Friday, so I'm sure after that there's going to be something more positive to come out of that as well. Just, you might not have been aware of that, Tom, but it's, it's on the agenda for Friday.
I have, Maria, thank you for that. I've spoken to the superintendent and the inspector that has been in consultation with the staff of the council. I thank you, Kehirlik, for allowing this debate, I think it's been a very useful debate. I think good things will come from it, and I thank councillor Bray for his amendments.
Yeah, thanks members, yeah, and that's, that's agreed. And now can just inform the members, the time, it's 10 past three, we're about halfway through the agenda. Councillor Maguire hasn't come in online yet, so we're, we're going to come back to those. Motion number 38, councillor Bray, can I get a second there?
Kehirlik, while no electoral system is perfect, here in Ireland, we have a system which people have confidence in and which has served the country well over the decades. Our electoral system makes provision for people who are unable to go in person to vote at a polling station due to physical illness or disability to apply for inclusion in the postal voters list. All such applicants are required to declare that they are ordinarily resident at the address given, and they must provide the required medical cert signed and stamped by a doctor, certifying that the applicant has a stated physical illness or a physical disability and is unable to go to the polling station to vote. It has always been my experience, Kehirlik, over the years, that those people who applied for a postal vote because of physical illness or disability were entitled to such a vote. However, what occurred in the Ballymote Tubercurry electoral area at the last local election in 2019 severely undermined public confidence in the electoral system. People certainly know that something was fundamentally wrong when they looked at the number of postal votes, postal voters claiming to have a physical illness or disability. The Sligo Strand Hill electoral area with an electorate of 16,500 had 20 postal votes. The Sligo Drumcliff electoral area with an electorate of 16,000 had 17 postal votes. And the Ballymote Tubercurry electoral area with an electorate of 24,500 had 252 postal voters. These figures told us that, that the system had been abused in the Ballymote Tubercurry electoral area. And in saying that, Kehirlik, I wish to make it clear that I'm not suggesting any wrongdoing by the staff who compiled the electoral register, as it's my understanding that the documentation submitted in each case was in accordance with the requirements of the relevant legislation. But we are all aware, Kehirlik, of the allegations that people who were on the list of postal voters included people who lived in the United States, Australia, the United Kingdom, New Zealand and Eastern Europe. And social media also revealed that some of those people were participating in normal sporting activities, including Gaelic football. So it's abundantly clear that false information was included on the application form submitted in the name of some applicants. And I think all of us know that it's an offence to knowingly give false information on the application forms. The general public are aware of that the system was abused and corrupted, and in this context, they expect the relevant state agencies and in particular the Gardaí to ensure that the integrity of our electoral system is protected. In July 2019, this council called on the Gardaí authorities to carry out a full and comprehensive investigation into the matter, because it is obvious that if action is not taken now, it would open the floodgates and lead to further wholesale abuse and corruption of our electoral system in the future. Now, I am aware, Kehirlik, that investigations into such cases can be lengthy. However, there is a level of public disquiet about this matter, and I think it's timely that we would ask the minister for justice and the Gardaí commissioner if the full and comprehensive investigation has been carried out by the Gardaí authorities and the outcome of same. Thank you, Kehirlik. I'll move the motion.
Thank you, Chair. Just to support the motion, when you're looking at them numbers, that's absolutely outrageous. So you would be fully supporting councillor Bray.
Okay, members, thank you.
Just to the Chair. Should we be having our own investigation, us as councillors, into this matter? Because I mean, it's going to affect us further down the line than our local and our general elections. I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay, well, members, can we maybe come back to that? We've agreed on the motion as it is. If no other members want input into it, I'll move on to the next motion.
Maybe respond.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Any suggestions might be worth considering.
Or might just note my suggestion.
Okay, we'll note that. Thanks councillor Healy, councillor Bray. Motion number 39, councillor Bray, second. Councillor Boy.
Conscious, Kehirlik, that you want to complete the agenda, and I, I'm, I'm satisfied with the report, thank you.
Thanks councillor Bray. Councillor, you're okay on that, councillor Boy, thank you. Motion 14, councillor Tom Fox, can I have a second there? Thank you. Are you okay on that councillor Fox?
Yeah, thank you for the report, Amor. And I'm happy with the report and in light of the situation with the meeting, I'm happy to, to move on with the, to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, thanks, you're happy councillor Taylor, yeah. Motion number 41, councillor Queenan, I don't think he's been able to get in, so we'll defer that one. And defer number 41, 42. Number 43, councillor Gibbons, can I get a second there? Thank you, thank you councillor Gibbons. Number 44, councillor Walsh. He must be.
Next, Kehirlik.
Thank you. Do you want to take this motion?
Yeah, please.
Okay, can I get a second there?
I'll be brief.
Thank you councillor Healy. Okay, go ahead.
Kehirlik, in mid-2018, as we know, a site was purchased at Caltra by the OPW at a cost of 1.35 million. In February 19, the minister at the time confirmed in Dollyrann, the Sligo was progressing as part of PPN bundle, as part of a three, three Gardaí stations to move forward. The other two Gardaí stations both.
Kehirlik, in mid twenty eighteen, as we know, a site was purchased at Caltra by the OPW at a cost of one point three five million. In February nineteen, the minister at the time confirmed in Dullier and the Sligo was progressing as part of PPN bundle, as part of a three, three Gardaí stations to move forward. The other two Gardaí stations, both in McCroom and Tipperary, Clamell and Tipperary and McCroom and Cork are both advancing and Sligo has been left behind. So the motion is as is, I'm asking everyone to support it in that we write both the minister, Minister of State at the Department of Public Expenditure and Reform with responsibility for OPW and the Minister for Public Expenditure to outline the plans for this land at Caltra. You know, things have moved on quite a bit from mid twenty eighteen since the site is purchased. The Gardaí station is at capacity and over capacity in terms of office space and staff in Sligo. There is no additional parking being made available. There, we have spent close to a million over the last four years in minor works on the station. And their minor works, in terms of essential works for health and safety, they would have had, that money would have had to been spent anyway, whether there was a new build Gardaí station or not. As we all know, the staff walked out of the Gardaí station in mid twenty seventeen. So I think the people of Sligo are owed an explanation. And I think it's very fair that government now provide very clearly what is the plans for the lands that the OPW purchased for the state in twenty eighteen. What is the plan for this land at Caltra? I think the people of the county should be owed an explanation and what outline proposals for this site going forward. And I think, I still believe that there should be a new build Gardaí station at Sligo. I think, I think in terms of the police and reform plan from Commissioner Harris, who appears to not be in favour of a new build at Gardaí station in Sligo, I still believe a political decision can overturn this. And I would call on all the Ractis members to ensure that as much pressure can be put on as possible. The current Gardaí station won't be fit for purpose after one point two or one point four million is spent. It's minor health and safety work. And I'm calling on, I'm calling on both the Minister of State, the OPW and the minister to outline their plans for the land.
Thank you, councillor Healy, second it.
Yeah, I just want to support the motion. First of all, it's public, the land was bought by the OPW, it's public money. We need to know exactly what's happening with it and what's going to happen with it. We also held a meeting here, Chair, as you're aware yourself. And the deputation of us was meant to meet with the minister regarding this. At the time, I requested that a deputation of councillors would meet with the minister in relation to this. We never got a response back to that. As it says, I don't think that it's right that the Guards have to work in the conditions that they have to work in. It's not going to address the problem. They're still going to have problems with parking and everything else at the station. There was a site got, the site was got to build a new station on it. And I think that we have a duty here to the people that we represent, that we follow through. And as I says, and I, and I agree with councillor Walsh, we mightn't agree on a lot, but I'll definitely agree on this. It is a political decision and we have members here that are in government. And let's use your powers to change this. And I will support you on it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Castley.
Thank you, I'll be brief, I won't go. I just want to agree with everything that was said there by the previous speakers. I'm not going to go back over it again. But just to add to that also, that the presentation that we did give Joe Nugent at the time, we asked, and Chair, you would have remembered this, and you specifically asked as well for answers to the questions. There were at least twenty questions asked in that presentation. They gave us back a kind of a, a non-committal response. And we still haven't got answers to those questions as well. And that must be, I don't know how long it is now, it must, it could soon be twelve months, I'd say. Was it, was it in, was it September when he was there, was the presentation? Anyway, it's a long time though to be waiting when he promised that the following week he would have the answers to those questions. So my own motion in relation to the certificates and access and disability and fire certs, that's all related to the, the building as well and the the safety measures and safety concerns that will always be there associated with an old building. No matter what you do, no matter how much money you put into it, you're not going to make that building right. It wasn't fit for purpose, December two thousand and nineteen, the week, or sorry, yeah, December two thousand and nineteen, the week before Christmas, and the week after Christmas, they said it was suddenly fit for purpose. Now, I don't know how that circle can ever be squared. I don't think it ever will be. And I think that we should keep asking the questions because it's the only way. And as I said before about the, it's like the Shawshank Redemption. If you keep asking and keep asking, eventually they will have to give us the answers. Thank you. I'd just like to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Castley. Yeah, and I also like to support because I think it is, we all outlined our concerns at that meeting here with Mr Nugent. I think it is disappointing that so many months on, we still haven't gotten. And I think in fairness, you know, the Gardaí have been to the forefront, you know, especially in this pandemic. And I think they deserve, you know, adequate facilities. And, you know, I think has been outlined, no matter what you do, you can't square a circle, you know. So I think certainly we'll all need to keep the pressure on. Councillor Gilroy?
Sorry, yeah, just to come in on that, I agree with the motion completely. But I've spoken to the National Ambulance Service too, because we need an ambulance centre in Sligo. And I've asked them, and I know that Paddy O'Reardon, the head of the National Ambulance Service, has spoken to the OPW about getting access to that site as an ambulance centre, which is something else that we do very much need, a proper ambulance centre that would be near the roundabout, near the dual carriageway, able to get out onto the Western Distributor Road, all of these places. So it would be a great advantage to the area. So that's one of the possible uses that I know it is being looked at. So hopefully, hopefully something positive will come out of, out of this debacle. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grady.
Just very briefly, I want to support the motion. I think what they're doing in the Gardaí station now, it's, it's, it'll never be right because of where the building is sited. But we are where we are. And, and a lot of money was spent on it, public money spent on it. I am also aware, as councillor Gilroy has mentioned, about the ambulance service being based there. If, if that was feasible and certainly an ambulance base on a motorway is the place to have it. So I think it's important that we keep this on the table and that there's something positively done for the good of the area with this very important and valuable piece of land. And just when we're on about the Gardaí, I'd like to wish Charlie Jordan every good wish in his retirement and congratulate him on many years of service. He was an absolutely excellent Gardaí, good to the people and loved by most people who dealt with him. And he wasn't out to make trouble for anybody, only to see, could he get them out of trouble and help them along the proper path. He was a great community guard and everybody knew him. So apologies for jumping in there, but I just, when I was on it and guess, I'd forget.
Thank you.
Let me just second what councillor Grady said about Charlie Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. I think all the members want to be associated with that because he.
Just through the chair, can we follow you up on that? As it says, there was a deputation of us going to meet the minister at the time and we haven't heard back from it. I think it's very important, as it says, that we, that we get a response back from that and that we do get to put our case across. Because as it says, the day here of the meeting, we didn't get answers to the questions we asked. And just in relation to what councillor Gilroy was saying about an ambulance area, there was earmarked a place in Carrow at one stage, I remember a good few years back. I don't know what ever happened to that, but there was a place earmarked for ambulance service and it is an important service as well. But as it says, I think we need to address this issue with, it was got for, to put a Gardaí station on. And I think we should follow that through first. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, okay, that's agreed, we'll follow up on that. Okay, members, thanks for that. Motion number forty five, councillor Walsh, second.
Thanks. Thank you, Kehirlik, and this is, this is something I've raised many, many times now and have to say again, very disappointed with this reply from Irish Water. It's a typical bull, reply full of bulology, saying everything and saying nothing. And the bottom line is that the people of Ballygallie pay the same tax as the people in every other town or village across the country. There's been no improvement in terms of wastewater treatment system in Ballygallie. There is no plans for wastewater treatment system in Ballygallie. And in Irish Water's reply, in its own reply, it's in, it's striving to provide the same high level of service to customers connected to public infrastructure across the country. Irish Water has no funding capacity. And in the bottom line, at the end of the reply, Irish Water appear to say there's a need for an agreement between the Department of Housing, Planning and Local Government, local authorities, the CRU and Irish Water to address the challenge of the lack of wastewater treatment systems in rural Ireland, in rural villages. Well, can I propose as a follow on to this motion, Kehirlik, that we write to both the minister and Irish Water and every local authority in the country to propose a scheme for local villages, smaller treatment systems and that there be funded made available for systems in smaller villages. Fair is fair, everyone pays the same tax, everyone should have the same level of public service. Ballygallie has been left a lot, left behind for long enough in terms of infrastructure. And I would ask everyone to support the motion. Thank you, Kehirlik.
Thank you, councillor Healy.
Yeah, I want to support the motion. And it's just like the response I got back in two thousand and nineteen. In fact, they even went further, told me that there is a treatment plant in Coloonie and if you want, the people in Ballygallie can connect into that, which is nearly three kilometres away. As it says, Irish Water were quick enough to come in and take up the Ballygallie water scheme, which, which the locals came together and put a scheme in there for the water. They were quick enough to come in and take that up. As it says, there is a need for a treatment plant in the village. And I think that, and I agree with councillor Walsh, I think that there is a need for small schemes like this and that no village should be left out. We know, we know the importance of having a treatment plant and that we know exactly where the, where the shortage is going on that. So I think that Irish Water needs to step up. It's no different than the response I received and not just today, but it's the exact same response we received back in two thousand and fourteen in relation to it when we were looking for extension works to be done on the one in Ballantore. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilroy.
Again, I'd like to support the motion and that this would also possibly help with getting some of the unfinished estates finished if they could connect into that. I know that, that there could be problems with those. One thing I would ask that maybe the Water Services Department would include in correspondence with Irish Water would be that wherever a new wastewater facility would be installed, that a facility for the emptying of camper van waste would be provided. It doesn't even have to have a door on it. For all intents and purposes, it's a toilet with a chain that empties those cubicels because we know they're, they're going somewhere. And if there isn't a facility to dump them, but it'd be very cheap, a couple of hundred quid would put one of those in at any waste, beside any wastewater plant, camper vans could pull over and, and pour their, their cartridge into it. And it just might be a sensible place to put them right beside the plant when it's being built. And it would alleviate another problem that we have in the communities. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, councillor Gilroy. I think that's a good idea, it's a bit of forward thinking. Okay, members, that's agreed. Motion number forty six, councillor Walsh, can I have a second or? Councillor Gilroy?
Kehirlik, Kehirlik, I welcome the reply for Tom, from the senior engineer, Tom Brennan. I met with residents down here at this junction. Everyone knows the junction on R two eight seven is you turn for the Holy Well or turn back for Carrow or head on for the main drum of here road. There's four crossroads here, the cyclines are extremely poor. Speed is also an issue, there's a lack of signage on approach from both sides, but the Ballantore side and the Sligo, Carrow side rather. And I welcome the reply that, that the junction is going to be assessed. I look forward to the report and it'll be considered for the low cost accident scheme this year. I think this is probably one of the busiest junctions around that hasn't been addressed. There has been a large amount of safety improvement works at a lot of junctions across the county over the last few years credit to the infrastructure department. But this is one that there has been little or no work done on. So I would ask that it be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilroy.
Just support the motion and like it's, it's, it's a difficult junction for people who know it like ourselves. But for a stranger coming into it, 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 it can be quite daunting. And, you know, none of us wants to see an accident happen. So hopefully something could be done on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Healy.
Yeah, just want to support the motion and also that we have a problem along that road with trees. They want to look at that as well, branches hanging all over the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion agreed, members, motion number forty seven, councillor Maloney, can I get a second or?
Could I defer to July?
Thank you, councillor Maloney, yeah. Motion number forty eight, councillor Gibbons, second or?
Okay. I'd like to thank the Roads Department for the report that we got back. So only that in relation to it, it's, the people in Willow Park have come to me and asked me a number of them actually, most of the residents in the area, they have major concerns with the traffic that's going up into that street. Like it's going up there, there's not actually a stop, there's just, there's going up there by racers and they're flaking up into the street, turning, it's like coming back down, it's a turning point, it's on. It's a long stretch of road and even as there's a lot of traffic along either side on the footpaths and children are playing around the area. And it's, as explained to me, it's only a matter of time before there's a serious accident or a fatality. And anybody that's familiar with that area would know as you're going up through Ash Grove, right in the whole way into that Maribou estate. You have the Rosewood Court and you have Ash Grove and you have Oak Park and Willow Park at the top. There's ramps the whole way in and up that stretch of road until you get to the very top, which runs from Oak Park right over into Willow Park. Willow Park is the longest stretch and it's the most dangerous end of it. And people in the area approached me in relation to it. I says, look, I says, I'll bring it up at the council meeting and see, could we get maybe a speed up on it? Now, I do know that the council might have worries in relation to funding, to fund that work. But it's, I'll talk to the Roads Department in relation to that. I think there may be a bit of funding there, kind of of her own personal expenses to put something in there. But I will be in contact with the Roads Department during the week in relation to it. So funding won't be an issue. Now, there is the possibility the engineer might see that there's a need for tree. But if he has a need for tree, good and well, as I says there, it's not the funding end of it. But I says, I'd bring it as far as the meeting and I'd ask you all to support the motion. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Healy, second is agreed. Thank you. Members, councillor McGuire has been able to get, get through to us online. I know there was some difficulties with the internet connection. Can I move back to motion number thirty six? Can I second councillor Gibbons? Can you hear us okay, Sean Aide?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, just talk up a bit maybe.
Yeah, thanks very much, Kehirlik, and my apologies for joining the meeting late. And if permitted, I would like just to make a comment in relation to motion number twenty five regarding the bollards. Maybe I'll come back to that. In relation to this motion, I welcome the report in relation to management of the Cairn and the fact that funding through the Community Monuments Fund has been established and that the council are going to set out an info and awareness programme. I know this has been delayed due to COVID and hopefully now that restrictions are easing and given that we're going to have hopefully again, record numbers of visitors to the, to the monument and to the county, I'd hope that will be done as soon as possible. But I, I know that the Cairn is under the management of the OPW. But we as a council definitely have a role to play here. We promote the trail, we encourage people to come. It's seen as one of the dunes and the crown of Sligo tourism. And, and we have to accept responsibility for encouraging that amount of people to, to climb the mountain. And so I'd really urge that we do whatever we can in relation to protection of it. We have an obligation for generations to come that that monument would still be there so that people will always get to see Queen Mae's grave. And if we don't act, and if we don't act to protect it, there is a possibility that it won't be there. So I welcome the fact that we've got funding and hope that that can be put into place as quickly as possible. Thank you, Kehirlik.
Thank you. I'm going to allow the second or in, I'm not allowing any pets in today now, I have enough of speakers.
I'd have to support the motion as I do realise that in the past, some of my own party colleagues had brought this up. I know Chris McMahon has brought it up in relation to it and it has been an ongoing concern. And in reality to it, and I, every one of them, I'm sure has witnessed it, people climbing up on the Cairn. That is the problem, that's what we have to stop. We have to stop people from getting up on it for two reasons. One, they're damaging the Cairn and the other is they're going to, they're going to have an accident. And we're going to see some silly person then, after being up on something that they shouldn't have, trying to sue the OPW or sue the state of Sligo or whatever, something similar like what happened in the golf course down on Ross's Point there last week. I was glad to see the outcome of that anyway. But the one thing, and I would say it in relation to it, this is a national heritage. We have to protect it. The last thing any of us wants to see is a fence around it to stop people. Common sense has to be used. There was an old tradition years ago was that if you were coming up from the, up to visit the monument, you brought a stone up with you and you put it on it. They've changed it over the last number of years, you bring a stone away with you, which is absolutely the opposite of what it was forty, fifty years ago. But the one thing that I would, I'd have to support the motion. But the one thing that I would, I'd have to support the motion. I welcome the report that we got, but I do feel myself in reality, more needs to be done. Even if there's, the OPW is to put somebody in there that at the busiest times of the year is just to keep some control. Because as I says, there's children allowed run up on that. Like, that's the senselessness of parents letting their children run up. They're supposed to be, they're supposed to be the responsible ones, and children run up. It shouldn't happen. But as I says, it's damaging our national monument, and it is a danger to anybody that climbs it. They shouldn't be up on it. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Truth to share.
Consul Healy, sorry.
Listen, I want to support the motion. As somebody that works for the Office of Public Works, may I make one suggestion to Consul McGuire, that it might be no harm for Sligo County Council to work in conjunction with the OPW in regardless. It is an ongoing issue. I've been up there many a time myself, bringing up wheelbarrows to put the stones back up on the hills. We've ran programmes ourselves there to tell people about not going up on the monument. After all, it is a grave. It's not a monument. It's a grave. Somebody's buried there. That means, so we have done all that, the OPW. But I would say that Sligo County Council has to work in conjunction with the OPW. It's important that we're all singing on the same hymn sheet here, and that whatever can be worked, maybe it can be worked between the two groups. Thank you.
Lovely. Thank you. That agreed, members. Thank you. Sorry, Consul McGuire again. You're on mute, Sinead.
Thank you. My apologies. Thanks to my colleagues for their support. And just to note that in the report that we received, it's very clear that the council are working in conjunction with the OPW to protect this site. That's the report that we received, and I was very happy to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul McGuire, motion number thirty-seven. Can I get a second?
Thank you, Kehelak.
I'll second that.
This motion is seeking to have funding provided for coastal communities, particularly this year, given the number of staycations we are going to have. Coastal communities end up coming under huge pressure, where we get lots of visitors at a particular time of the year without any additional infrastructure or provision being made for them. What I'm calling on is funding so that we can provide adequate parking, adequate toilet refuse collection and signage. It's to assist communities in trying to manage those large numbers. Now, I note since I put in this motion that there has been an announcement of funding for coastal regions for the first time ever, and I'm really glad to see that. But this is something that has to keep going, because our communities are left in a position where we're expected to cater for these numbers without having any adequate provision. And I know that within the council, there hasn't been a dedicated fund for coastal communities, and that's what I'm really calling for, and that it would be ongoing. Effectively, what coastal communities are dealing with during the summer is we cater for a festival. We cater for hundreds of people without having proper signage, proper parking, toilets, rubbish collection. And ultimately, it is the communities and the local authority who ends up dealing with this. And we need resources, because most of these areas are special areas of conservation. So they're very delicate habitats and something that we are obliged to protect. I welcome the report and note that additional provision is going to be made, and that's really necessary, particularly this year. One of the other asks in relation to this is that we would have specific signage so that no matter where you go in the country, you would identify that you are entering a special area of conservation, and therefore you must take your litter home, not damage the wildlife, and try to protect the area as much as possible. I was absolutely heartbroken the other day when walking through our special area of conservation, Strand Hill, to come across children who were jumping on the dunes. Now, by doing that, they're obviously completely destabilising the dune. And the dune is protecting the special area of conservation. If we don't have the dunes, we're going to have, in Strand Hill, we may have no caravan site at all. So it's really important that we get the message out that this has to be maintained and protected. And my second ask in the motion was that we have counters installed in our coastal communities for a week during the high season. And that's so that we can have an adequate reflection of exactly how many people are coming into those areas, so that we know what we need to cater for, what we need to be ready to cater for hopefully next year. So I would ask that that traffic counter be put in Strand Hill, Ennis Groan and Ross's Point for a week at least during the summer months, so that we have a correct reflection of the numbers of people coming and using our coastal communities. Thanks very much.
Thanks. And I second in your motion. I do so as I know myself, Consular Clerk and Consular Queen have been contacted, you know, regarding West Sligo. And I know Consular Clerk wants to speak on this, and just that, you know, some of the beaches there are done more and further back. You know, we've been receiving calls where care parks are full at nine AM in the morning. So it is something that needs to be addressed. But I'd bring in Consular Clerk. I just want to support the motion.
I want to commend Consular McGuire for bringing this motion. It's very timely indeed. I have a motion down for the July meeting. It's deferred from this meeting to put in place an infrastructure development master plan that the likes of issues that Consular McGuire has identified for Strand Hill will be done countywide. And I want to come in the council for providing extra toilets at Ochrans Head and other sites in West Sligo. But we, the success of West Sligo in the last two years is unreal. I mean, there's a new walk developed at Ochrans Head there, done by the lads in the council. And the numbers are in the thousands that are used. We have seen done more than strand, at least two thousand people on last Sunday on the beach. And, you know, we have a portable toilet, but we have to look at camper vans and the full infrastructure, and we have to get proper investment, like they have in Kerry. They facilitate for everything in Kerry. We have to do it in Sligo. We have to get our act together. And like, we have seen in Cavan, twelve million, fourteen million for Westquart House. I mean, if we got fourteen million here in County Sligo and had a master plan to facilitate for our tours and trade, that's the way forward. And we have to put our heads together for next month's meeting to get this done. Thanks, Kehelak. Sorry for going on.
That's great. Thank you. Agree with everything you said. Consul Gilroy.
Yeah, again, to support the motion, and I would like to support what Consular Clerk has come in next month as well. This morning at the regional assembly, Consular Bree and myself were in attendance, and we received a report from an organisation called Moses, which was by Dr Stephen Hines from the Socioeconomic Marine Research Unit. And it talked about everything, including tourism along the west coast and the Wild Atlantic Way. And to see how far down the line the counties north of Galway are in comparison to the counties south of Galway. We're not getting near the numbers we should, and God forbid, we did get them, we're not ready for them, which would be a real fright to our system. The numbers they are getting, and this report makes it, so I'm going to try and get that and have it circulated to everybody before the next meeting, because I think people will have a real interest in it for when the debate comes up on Consular Clerk's motion. But I'd like to support this one. The overseas tourists don't seem to come north of the Galway Dublin Line at all, or Galway on the west coast, whereas the domestic tourists, Donegal and Mayo, seem to make a recovery, but Sligo unfortunately gets still left behind. So again, we have a lot of work to do on it, so I support the motion.
Okay, thanks, members. That's agreed. Now, Consul McGuire, just going back to motion number twenty-seven. I'm not sure whether you're able to hear that, but the motion has been amended. That reads, the motion was amended and agreed, that it reads that Sligo County Council removes the bollards at the seafront in Strand Hill as soon as it is considered safe to do so. So that was a motion that's agreed. Is that okay?
No, if I could just lodge my objection to that.
Kehelak, point of order. Kehelak, that motion was proposed, it was seconded, there was a debate, there was an amendment put, it was seconded, there was a debate. And Consular McSharry, who proposed the motion, concluded the debate, and a decision was made.
That's grand.
You chairman haven't even got the authority.
Oh, no, no, I was just reading out what agreed for.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I can appreciate anyone that might like to speak on it now. But huge precedent would be established if we were to revisit motions. And in fairness, Consular McSharry, I think, is gone.
Yeah.
But even if he was here, the decision is made.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We should be dealing with the business, because you have asked us at the outset that you want to conclude the agenda.
That's what I'm going to do. So I'm just reading that out. So I'll move on to.
Sorry, if I may, Kehelak, just to say that I know that on previous occasions, other councillors have been given the opportunity to come back, and particularly in circumstances where I have had technical difficulties, have been trying for the past hour and a half to get logged in and have not been able to. I won't speak on it, but I would like to launch my objection just to the decision.
Okay, thank you. That's grand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, members, moving on, and thanks. We're down to the last twenty minutes. We're getting through them. And with your agreement, we'll get the rest of the agenda finished. Item number forty-nine, Consular Bree. Can I get a second?
Kehelak, as I say, I'm conscious that you want to complete the agenda, and I'd like to thank Mr Murphy for his report.
Thank you. Consul Boyle seconded that. Motion number fifty, Consular Clerk has indicated to second. Consular Taylor?
Yeah, thanks, Kehelak. Look, I'd like to first of all, you know, compliment Mr Kilfeather on his efforts for this county so far, and compliment Orla Colly for her work in this county at the moment. Kehelak, this situation has escalated by the day over the past number of weeks. And for some, they're a lifetime dealing with this. We've seen the protests in Dublin. What we are, Kehelak, is we're all very proud of where we're from, where we come from. And we feel great pride in our achievements. And one of the greatest achievements for anyone is owning a home, building a home, having a home. And Consular O'Grady alluded to that earlier in the meeting. People have saved money, taken on extra work to get deposits for mortgages, continue to work to make their repayments yet. Some of the people in this country are watching cracks appearing on their walls, or having sleepless nights worrying about what the future holds, because their homes are crumbling before their eyes. I don't want this for the people of this country or this region, and I'm asking for a hundred percent redress, nothing less. They shouldn't have to jump through hoops to qualify for the scheme. We in this county shouldn't have to jump through hoops to qualify the scheme either. And the fear is that many will have to wait for years to rebuild, and that can't happen either. Not with the way the market is going at the moment. We've many debates in this chamber on different issues, some more important than others, but this issue is so important. And as I said, we're all proud of our own patch. And this is through no fault of the people that own these homes or living in these homes. And it's heart wrenching, and they do need our support. And it's also so important that this county gets on the scheme. So I'm asking, and I think, I think this, everybody knows, every councillor in this chamber knows how important this issue is. Some have spoken on it before. It has escalated and is escalating at the moment. But, you know, we need to show our support for this as well, from this chamber, from this council, and from this county.
Thank you. Consular Clerk?
Yes, Kehelak, I'd like to thank Consular Taylor for bringing this motion and indeed for his support. And both myself and Consular Taylor visited some of the homes affected in West Sligo lately. And to see the heartbreaking position in families, you know, children crying about the house cracking around them. And the words he said in relation to Tom, your father, is absolutely right. We're indebted to Tom for taking the initiative and writing to the minister and putting it on the agenda. And all our TDs here have, since receiving the letter from Mr Kilfeather, have acted, have spoken the doll. Marion Herken has spoken the doll. And, you know, also in relation to the work that Orla Colly has done, very, very capable architect and engineer, chartered engineer. But what I'd say is that anything less than a hundred percent redress is no good. Because they have to rent houses, you know, and they have the stress and the heurtic that's involved in seeing the houses go, that their dream houses falling apart around them. And I have seen at least ten houses here in West Sligo, two of them local authority houses, very, very distressful scenes, tears in the eyes of the householders, because they have mortgages to pay. And they'll have mortgages to pay when they move out of their houses. And this is a very stressful situation, and it won't be solved easily. And I know there's people saying, why should the taxpayer pay for this? The fact of the matter is that the quarry is involved, should be held to account. But it's going to cost about two billion to address the whole nation. So the government have to stand in for these families and support them. Thanks, Kehelak.
Thank you. Consular O'Grady?
I'd be very brief. I'd like to support the motion. I think this is a dreadful situation, that people who went about their business and built homes, their dream homes, many of them. I was speaking to a man and woman, and they had three jobs between them to build their dream home. And now they're affected by pyrite. And as Consular Clerk has said, nothing less than a hundred percent redress scheme for those people involved. They have mortgages to pay, they have rent to pay, and above all, they're heartbroken. And it has put them under stress for many, many years. So I think the government needs to deal with it and deal with it very, very quickly.
Thank you. Consular Catherley? You've indicated to come in.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be very brief, but just to state as well, I'd like to support the motion and everything that everybody has said. But just to state as well that a precedent has actually been set in Dublin, and the pyrite scheme, a hundred percent redress, has been paid there. And that also includes the renting of a property while the family move out, and also the renting or sorting of storage. Because obviously, when you have a family and you have a house full of everything that everybody has, where do you put your stuff? Where do you put everything? And that's costly. It could take twelve, eighteen months to build a new house. So everything has to be moved out. So that's all that stress is added. That hasn't been mentioned. And because a precedent is set in Dublin, there's no reason why they cannot do it here as well in Sligo, Clare, Mayo and Donegal. And I think it's going to be even bigger around the country. And there's another one of the conditions, actually, that householders are tied to refitting their kitchens again, which is if you have a twenty-year-old kitchen and you're building a new house and putting in an old kitchen, there are details that need to be worked out, but I think it's very important that that's all included in the redress as well. And also windows. If the windows are of a certain age, you have to refit the windows again. Like, that doesn't make any sense in a new house. So that's, they're just some of the issues, I think, that need to be addressed. But definitely, when there's a precedent set in Dublin, we're no different than them in Dublin, and we deserve the exact same as them.
Thank you. Consular Sinead McGuire?
Thank you, Kehelak. I'll be brief also. Fullheartedly agree with the motion. I think we've all been shocked by the stories that we've heard over the last number of weeks from people. And you can't but let your heart go out to them. But one thing that hasn't been mentioned is the disruption to the lives, the actual practical disruption of trying to move. Like, if it happened here in Sligo, if we had too many, there aren't houses to rent. Where do these people go? They're still travelling to work. They have to get places for their children in schools or else transport them daily from further afield to their school. It's just outrageous. And the fact, as Consular Catherley has said, that there is a precedent already, that there is a scheme for those, and it was a hundred percent. We cannot accept less than a hundred percent in this jurisdiction other. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul Gilroy?
Again, to support the motion, I was on a Zoom meeting yesterday evening, and Minister O'Brien was on it, and he acknowledged that he had heard from Sligo, and that the pressure was on to include all the other counties. And he accepted that that would have to be an important part of the redress, that all these other counties. It's coming up in Clare. There was a report this morning of it coming up in Limerick as well. I'd probably have been here fifteen minutes earlier. Only I met Frank McBirtie in a petrol station in Boyle, and he gave me a hotline and thinker about it. This is going to be huge. I think the issue of keeping some of the products from the previous house, that's not going to work in a lot of ideas. Whatever about the inconvenience of trying to refit a kitchen, which I fully understand. The windows cannot be refitted, because windows that were fitted in two thousand and eight do not meet partail of the building regulations. So they're not going to meet that. So that sort of thing just cannot be done. So the scheme does have to be revisited. It does have to be done right. But those responsible have to be held responsible as well, whether they're the NSAI, the manufacturers, or whoever certified them along the way. So it has to be put right. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul Maloney?
I want to fully support the motion, Kehelak. Nothing less than a hundred percent redress is acceptable. And the fact that we live here in the northwest doesn't mean that we're any less deserving than any other part of the country.
Thank you. Mr Kilfeather?
Kehelak, just to say, we had early last month written to the minister seeking that Sligo would be included in a scheme, and we had indicated our willingness as a council to administer any such scheme if we were approved. Now, we didn't get any correspondence back. We did get some, you know, a verbal word that the department would be in contact with us, but we hadn't heard anything. So I've written again yesterday. But Consul Gilroy has said. But councillor O'Gry has said that the minister has, has acknowledged that, that we have. And hopefully the department will be in contact with us shortly.
Okay, thanks, members. And we're all, would all fully support that, support that motion. I think we're all in agreement with that and, and support councillor Taylor's call for that. Now, members, we're down to the last six motions. Motion number 51, councillor O'Grady?
Just, I've been contacted by people living on the Seashore Road as regards the need for a bus shelter or some form of seating at the bus shelter there on the Seashore Road. And I'm also very conscious of Woodhaven, which is a respite centre and it deals with people with neurological problems. And from time to time, people come for respite, use the bus there to, to get into town or wherever they want to go, to Strand Hill or wherever. So it's important that we have some shelter and I'm asking that you write to the NTA requesting a review of, of that facility for the Seashore Road.
Thank you. Councillor Gibbons?
Cahill, look, I think myself that I'd have to support the motion. I can't understand why a bus service that we have wouldn't happen anywhere else, I don't think anywhere else in Europe that we have to apply, the council has to apply to put up a bus shelter. It's normally the standard thing that's done, especially with the population that's living in that area. It's a very open area out there. There's very little shelter there. We have the Western Distributor Route which is feeding down onto that now. And I'm sure that will be compared to the bus route as well at some stage. And I think that we need to be able to look at not just there, but other areas around. Because the one aspect to it, I know we had a problem in the inner city itself where a lot of vandalism was going on. But in areas like that, they are needed, they are required. There's no sense of somebody queuing up for a bus. It may be 15 minutes later, 10 minutes later, them getting even there 15 minutes early and getting soaked to the skin for the sake of a shelter. The shelter should be there to protect them until they get on the bus. So I would 100% support that motion. Thanks very much.
Okay, thanks. And hopefully when, when the NTA come back to us, because I know certainly it's, it's something that, bus shelters that I know as one of the rural councillors and the south sides of councillors, councillor Taylor and others, we have been hammering on that where you're sitting completely out there, it's needing a tree or any shelter whatsoever around you. So it is something that they need to address. So moving on, motion number 52.
The Sligo County Council reviewed the alleyway at Tracy Avenue. Now, this is a motion that I could have left for the municipal district meeting. But it is in such a state, I felt it needs to be done now. It's, I walked there the other evening and in my lifetime, I never seen it in such a condition. So I would ask that it would be assessed and that it would be upgraded. It is in absolutely dreadful condition.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gibbons?
Cahill, look, as somebody that grew up with councillor O'Grady within Tracy Avenue, I don't think I've ever witnessed it in the condition that it's in actually at the moment. And one thing that I would say in relation, if it's allowed to dilapidate into the dirt and filth that's actually down there at the moment, we are asking for trouble because the one thing, it's become a no-go area. It was, I'd simply say, one of the most safest alleys that we had ever. Because since Tracy Avenue was built, there has never been a person attacked, mugged or anything else. Not to the best of my knowledge, and I'm sure councillor O'Grady is the same in relation to that. But if it is a thing that we let the likes of these areas fall into decay, we're putting our hands out for trouble. And I would ask that a few pounds be spent on it to get the alley cleared up. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Motion number 53, councillor O'Grady?
The Sligo County Council put in place where people can sit and eat within the borough area. And I suppose since I put down this motion, more funding is apparent that it's coming. But anybody who goes around the town, especially at lunchtime or 11 o'clock in the morning, the morning break, sees that people haven't adequate seating. And I was in the town hall the other morning and walked down to Key Street. And there was people sitting on the wall there at the car park in Key Street. But there's quite an area between the water and the wall. And I would like that the council would have a look to see, could they put adequate seating there? Because it is an area used by people working in the centre of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gibbons?
As the second to the motion, I would 100% agree. And especially what we have seen in the last short while with the easing of the pandemic there in the last number of weeks. We've seen people queuing up outside of restaurants and things like that and taking food away with them and whatever. And no place for them to sit. And I think myself that it's actually, it's a vision of an area that you come, especially as a tourist town. Because we depend on so much of the history of Yates and the beauty of the surrounds here and the folklore. Even the Bram Stoker, the piece about Bram Stoker, people wants to see where Bram Stoker's mother was born and things like that. And where she grew up and where the stories of contract came from and all that aspect. So it is, it is a tourist location. But anybody that comes to the town, it's not very welcoming that you don't have adequate seating. You know, even for people to sit down and chat and whatever else. I know we have seating over the last number of years. And I know there was controversy over different places where it went. But I think we should look at Sligo and it is something, it's very inviting. If you see seating within an area that people can sit down, it's a lovely thing to see where people can take the weight off their feet for 10, 15 minutes or even an hour or whatever else. So I'd have to support the motion. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councillor Gilroy?
Could I just ask that that gets included to the county area as well? Because it's not just in the borough that people need to sit and eat stuff. The borough, the borough is not allowed.
Yes.
We have to eat. I know, maybe we could eat a little bit less, but.
We've got a lot of contributors if I open it up to the county. So I think we'll keep going. Thanks, members. Motion 54, I'll second that. Or I defer. Thank you, councillor Taylor. We're nearly there, members. Motion 55, councillor Gibbons. Thank you.
Cahill, look, I would have, this is absolutely no, how would I put it? It's no doubt or whatever, or no kind of, kind of bad feeling towards the roads department in relation to this issue. This is something, and I know myself, the Sligo Roads Department has always worked so closely with people with disabilities in Sligo to put in the right size disabled parking bays within the town. It's exemplary everywhere that you go, it is there. But I do know because there were, in such a confined area over beyond at Dooley Park, the Clever end of it, there was a disabled bay put in at the bottom. Where it was put, the driver's side was accessible out because there was a good swing out. But it's still only the size of an ordinary parking, an ordinary parking space. And the woman that actually brought to me attention, she deals with a lot of, she has her own business. She's adaptable solutions and she does a lot of audits and private audits and buildings. And she's a wheelchair user herself and she has young children. She got trapped in her, she got trapped or the children were trapped in the car. Because when she was over at Dooley Park and got out her side of the car with the ramp to get the young children out from the baby seats in the back with the edge of the wheelchair, she couldn't get down between the two cars. Now, there's nobody could foresee that. Realistically, engineers are not, had the best of that space and used it. So what I am asking is maybe that the re, she even understood that herself, as I explained, she probably knows more about engineering than most people kind of, other than the experts in the room here itself, but compares to us councillors. But she was asked, she was asked if there was any possibility that's right. That one at the bottom, as she said, is a disaster and it needs to be upgraded. It means we lose one space there to allow the full space for disabled parking. We're in the, we're within the guidelines of parking spaces and how many cars is allowed for disabled parking spaces, so many spaces. And we're within that guideline for one space. But what she was asking, and because it is such a beautiful area, it is a place that a lot of elderly people go and people with disabilities, is that two places will be provided. That one will be modified, the one that's at the bottom. And that one will be put at the entrance as you're coming into it, so that it kind of covers both ends of it. So if there was any possibility at all, you might, that the roads department would take a look at that and bring it up to standard. As I says, I visited the ones in Clever around the walkways. And even though they're white, they don't have to be blue, their rails are painted each side for the extra space from getting out of cars and whatever else. And as I said, the working relationship, I think every councillor has here with the roads department in relation to disability issues, I think is second to none. And as I said, it's no criticism, that was the word I was looking for. It's no criticism on the roads department because I know it will be rectified. And you have a fantastic group within the roads department and I think you need to be commended on it. But I do know that this problem will be solved. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councillor O'Grady, you seconded, just agreed. Okay. Thank you. Councillor Boyle, number 56?
Thank you, Chair. The Commission of Inquiry into Mother and Baby Homes and Certain Related Matters has led to survivors down. It had a limited remit which only included specific homes and county homes. Not everybody affected by these past wrongs. The Commission discounted the evidence given by hundreds of survivors to the Compatential Committee. And we need to do better by survivors, adoptees and birth parents. Now, the European Commission for Human Rights has said that the whole thing was in human rights compliant. And Belfast Legal Firm have also stated that these were crimes against humanity and the court should go to the International Criminal Court. So it's still clear to see that the government are still covering up the collusion between church and state. So I'd ask the council to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, councillor Bree.
And I actually mentioned it there a minute ago on councillor O'Grady's motion in relation to what, Sligo and the connection with Bram Stoker. I'm serious in relation, this Bram Stoker was able to write contract and horror stories from what his mother had told him about the cholera epidemic in Sligo. And I'll tell you this much, with what happened in the mother and baby homes, I can guarantee you, there's bigger horror stories to come down the road, promise. And it's just, that'd be my opinion in relation, I 100% support that motion.
Thank you. Councillor O'Grady?
Yeah, I fully support councillor O'Boyle's motion. And again, acknowledge his commitment to this whole issue and the many times that he has brought it to the table here. And we certainly have to do better by the survivors of those baby, mother and baby homes. So I think it's important we keep it on the agenda and that we, that we seek that the government open up the whole review again because we haven't, we haven't given full acknowledgement to what the survivors has, has, the reports that they have given. And we have to do better by them.
Okay. Members, I just want to go back to, I know councillor Gilroy was late. He was held up at another meeting and councillor McGuire has a motion that I omitted, I apologize. So if I go back to deferred motions, motion number 20, is that councillor Gilroy doing to take that one or? Defer that one. So, sorry, if I can just take them as, as they're on the agenda here. Motion number 22 was the deferred motion from councillor McGuire. Apologies.
Yeah, I'm happy to defer that, Cahill. But I did have my hand raised for the last three motions, just to contribute if I, if I may.
Sorry, apologies. Yes, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you. Just in relation to councillor Boyle's motion, I wholeheartedly agree. And also with the comment by councillor O'Grady, commend his attention to this really important issue. And I do fear that what councillor Gibbons has said, that this is going to be the next horror story is, is possible. And I think it is beyond time when people have access to their records. It's basic information, who they are, where they come from and where their parents are. And everybody is entitled to that. And I would wholeheartedly agree with that. In relation to the disabled spaces, the reason I was late for the meeting today was because I was down at the seafront in Strand Hill with the Irish Wheelchair Association and our disability access officer. And it is wonderful that we have that access officer, we're there with a wheelchair user and showing the difficulties that they face. So the difficulty that councillor Gibbons has outlined in relation to space would be true of quite a few vehicles. There are vehicles that carry more than one wheelchair and they require it to be both wider and deeper in order that they can have access on both sides, which is exactly the issue that councillor Gibbons was outlining. So perhaps that could be taken on board when we are updating and upgrading our disability access points. And then in relation to councillor O'Grady's motion on seating, I wholeheartedly agree with that. I've had an opportunity to go to seating, but obviously we need to provide additional bins so that people have somewhere to put their rubbish. And also we have to readdress the issue of public toilets. I was shocked that most small villages I went to in Kerry, I could find a public toilet. And we don't have one in Sligo town. It's just unacceptable. And we need, we have to go back to that issue if we are really serious about accommodating tourists in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McGuire. Councillor Catherley?
Thank you. Yeah, I just put my hand up as well, just for councillor Gibbons' motion there and to support councillor O'Boyle as well. I'm just interested in councillor Gibbons' motion there. And I would also like to acknowledge the work that Thomas Cairns is doing and the repainting of the disabled spaces in Sligo town. That has, that's welcomed and the users are very thankful for those improvements. So just to support the motion and to thank the engineers and everybody involved in the repainting of disabled spaces in Sligo. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
That's their traffic burdens. Our traffic burdens is doing a fantastic job. And when it is coming to disabled spaces. And even many a time, all I ever done was lifted the phone and they were there in minutes. And that's the one. But I want to acknowledge them along with the roads department. Thanks very much.
Okay, thanks, members. Now we're down to the last motion. Councillor Gilroy, motion 23. Can I just get a second there?
Thanks very much. And thanks councillor Fox for seconding it. This has been brought up many times in the past. This has gone on since 2018. I acknowledge the report and the difficulties and the delays that have been encouraged. I was sent a few things recently by people. There's, there's four pages in the list, the County Sligo Record of Monuments. Four pages of monuments on Inishmurray. I was also sent a copy of a letter that, that a lady got from the minister at the time, that it's a matter for the owner of the property in which the facility would be built and the local authority. I think we need to expediate this even more. We need to get it finished. It's dragged on and dragged on and dragged on. There are people visiting Inishmurray who are doing damage to the monument. And that is my biggest fear, that they're taking damage in the monument. There was an interesting post on social media from the daughter of a man who had, has worked for this council all his working life and is retired now. But he said, our, she said, our Inishmurray island, a sacred place, a home place where our fathers and their fathers before them were born and reared. It is ours. It's not an abandoned, unknown island, as some may believe. We will stand and protect you. We will keep you sacred and special. And that just shows you how passionate the people who lived on Inishmurray are about the place that they lived. And that's the next generation. Inishmurray is entirely unique. There's no other island like it in Ireland, regardless of its archaeological remains and incredible historical fabric. The whole island should be declared a national monument in the guardianship of the state. Provided the state is actually going to guard it. For the last 60, 70 years since the people left it, they have been guarding it. They've been visiting it regularly. Most of them don't have boats of their own anymore, so they have to hire someone. So they've been denied for the last three to four years access to the island to tend, to visit family graves. Can you imagine any of you that were told you couldn't visit the grave of your parents? I think anyone would be, would be frightened by that. It, it's very important. There's marine and wildlife issues out there that are unique. But the trouble is, the people who want to do harm to Inishmurray still have access to it. People can go there in private boats and they can take whatever they like off it. When you had regular visits by people who loved the island and the boatmen who, who took great care with everybody they brought, that nobody brought anything that didn't belong away from the island. They were made sure that they, that they would always, they'd, they'd watch out for that. And they'd know if anything had gone missing from their previous visit. And I suppose I've just seen a comment from Joe McGowan's book recently where the, the, I can't think of his name now, but he was an RAC sergeant in Grange. He'd go out and he'd visit the island and he'd search for the still and he'd find nothing and he'd find no storage. And he'd go into Mrs Hart for the tea. And after they'd have the tea, they'd get a couple of glasses of Poocheen before, for the journey back home. So I think, look, it's a very special place. It's very special to our tourism plan, the master plan that councillor Clark was talking about earlier on. All of these things. This island has to be protected and we have to get access back onto it. The, the access was doing more good for the island. There hadn't, I don't know of any reports of anyone ever getting injured from any of the registered boatmen. Because they literally will not go to the island if it is not safe to go to it. Councillor Bree has raised this in the past and I just felt it had gone over the six months since his last time to raise it. So I said I'd raise it again. So thanks to Tom Brennan for the report, but it, it, it does need to, it needs to be done. It needs to be finished out. It's gone on for three and a half years at this stage, since it was closed down by the Department of Transport at the time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Second.
Yeah, just to support the motion, it's, it's an important motion for, for the tourism industry in, in Sligo. It's a big attraction. It's well known throughout the world indeed, Inishmurray Island. And we need to, we need to protect what we have there. There's over 233 acres out there owned by various people with various folios. It's a townland of Sligo. It is an island. It is a townland. And it's Sligo's county council's responsibility to, to maintain it and to, to engage with the owners of those properties out there. And it's important that they're maintained in an appropriate way, in the interest of the people that own it. And yeah, it's, it's, I also tabled a motion earlier on, or last year on it. It's important that we keep raising the issue. And I hope that things can be finalized in terms of appear. And I hope that things can be finalized in terms of a pier of some sort being constructed there on the island so that boats can mourn in safety. And it is a dangerous place as you approach the island, so it needs to be done correctly. So, yeah. I support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Bree.
Be very brief. I wish to support councillor Gilroy's motion. And it gets very clear from the report that we've received that members of the public and families won't be able to visit Inishmurray Island this year again. And you know, it must be nearly four years since the Department of Transport and Tourism wrote to local boat owners stating that until suitable landing facilities were put in place in Inishmurray Island, boat owners must cease bringing passengers to visit the island. Now, at the time, this council requested then Minister for Transport and Tourism, Mr Shane Ross, to intervene so as to resolve the matters. And I understand from photos that were published that there was some type of meeting with his civil servants two years ago in Ballyshannon. And yet here we are today and boat owners still cannot bring members of the public, our families, out to the island. And I have to admit, Caherlock, that I'm still at a loss to understand why Minister Ross and his department insisted that passenger boats wouldn't be allowed to visit the island unless suitable new landing facilities were in place. Because as councillor Gilroy has pointed out, and to my knowledge, there's never been any type of serious injury to people embarking or disembarking at the natural harbour on the island. And I think all of us are aware of the significant difficulties caused to the tourism industry in the area as a result of the problem. So just formally, I support councillor Gilroy's motion.
Thank you. Councillor Healy, did you indicate?
Yeah, I just want to support the motion as somebody that works with the opposite public works and been, lived out on the island for a number of weeks as well. It's a very tranquil and a very beautiful place. There is concerns there with the graveyard and some of the walls out there as well. I'm disappointed to hear that people are taking stuff off the island. Because if that is happening, I think us as a local authority and the opposite public works should make sure that we know about that straight away. And councillor Bree is right. Minister Ross had an opportunity here to address this and he failed. I travelled in and out of that island on numerous occasions, like many people before me and people that jumped, went in off rocks. There was a safe area there. Lord of Mercy on, what's the thing? Rodney Lowmax used to bring us out. And it was always a safe area through. In fact, the pier that they built wasn't at all safe. It was the rocks that was there, that was created by God himself, was the safest landing place in and out. And we used to carry water and gas the whole way over. So as I says, it's disappointing that people can't get out to visit their loved ones. But I think there's an onus now on us and I think we need to, whatever new minister is here, he needs to step up to the mark. Because Minister Ross let this, let us and let the people down badly.
Thanks, Mr Gilfeather.
Yeah, I would have to agree with the motion. I don't know what minister Ross was at. I've been in on the island on a couple of occasions. There's a tradition there, in the month of August, you do a station in it and you walk on the walls around the, the the walls are in a circle and you walk around. It's an old tradition of the August station in it. I got in on the island, no problem. As councillor Healy said, it was the rocks that was the safest part that was put there by, I suppose, the original people. And the boatmen, we went three times, the last time I went in, we went, I went three times to Moloch Moor to get in on the island because the boatmen wouldn't go out, the swell was too big. And it is nine miles off the coast. So I don't know what minister Ross was at. And I'd love if there was someone here that could explain to us what he was at when he stopped people going in on the island. And there's many of the families living around Maharao and Money Goal that came off the island. And I'm sure many of them would like to get back in to visit their graves. And to visit, as you win on the island, all the homesteads are named, written on the walls, they're all named where each family lived. And for the schoolhouse, huge work has been done by the OPW. So I think it's something that needs to be kept on the table here. And I'd love to hear the explanation why minister Ross, if anyone could inform me, why minister Ross decided to stop boatmen going to the island.
Thanks. I'm going to give the final word on the motion to Mr Kilfeather.
Caherlock, there are two issues here. First of all, the landing area and that. We found ourselves having to get into that space to solve the problem. It has taken longer, it has been a factor in that. But the design now is with the Marine Survey Office and so it's moving ahead. Just to clarify, in case there's any, anyone, it's not Sligo County councils that are responsible for the built heritage on the island. That's the National Monument Service and the Parks and Wildlife Service. And councillor Healy can confirm that because it's the OPW that carries out any work on the island. So just in case anyone thinks Sligo County council are falling down in terms of the, of the built heritage on the island, we're not. We do not. That's not our responsibility. Our responsibility is, or we've agreed that it is, we get a landing facilities in place. And I genuinely believe that'll be done for summer 2022.
And also I'm delighted to hear that and that it will be done for next year at least. And look, it's a worrying thing. And I know you say it's not our responsibility, but I think it's every citizen's responsibility to look after our national monuments. And it's gone on too long and I know there's been delays in it and all the rest, but thank you very much for that.
Just to agree, just to agree with what the CEO says, he's right in what he says, that it is the Parks and Wildlife and also the OPW that is in charge of it. There was talk of us putting out people on the island there at one stage, doing up one of the old houses and that. I know about years back that the OPW had met with the families of the island to buy the island at one stage. But that fell through, as I says, it doesn't matter who owns the island. We all have a duty here. We all should be making sure. And as I says before, minister Ross has let us down. It's, has this meeting that held in Ballyshannon, was any of us at it or do we know about it? Because Ballyshannon, as far as I know, the last time we looked at the map, it's in Donegal, it's not in Sligo. Thank you.
Okay, members, thanks. Moving on, votes of sympathy, can a proposer? Councillor Gibbons seconded by councillor Fox. Votes congratulations, councillor O'Grady and seconded by councillor Gilroy. Conference training, agreed. Number 60 to note the summary proceedings attendant section with Local Government Act 2001. Noted and noted the correspondence. Any matters arising from the minutes?
Just on the correspondence, I could ask the chief executive, I think there might have been a letter. I didn't see it in the correspondence from the Sports and Recreation Partnership about maybe that we'd start the process of putting Sligo forward as a location for another 50 metre pool, seeing as the county has such an excellent ambassador at the moment. Councillor O'Boyle and myself were in the meeting where that was put forward to be brought towards the council, so.
Yeah, Caherlock, we did respond to that. The only point I made was the location should be the regional sports centre. We have, the only 25 metre pool there, it serves Sligo well for the last 35 years. And I wouldn't like to see any development in relation to a 50 metre pool that would compromise the regional sports centre. That was the only point I made in relation to supporting the proposal.
Okay, members, that's, any matters arising from the minutes? No. And item number 63, any other business? Just in conclusion, members, this is my last meeting. I leave a few words to say when we have our AGM, but I just want to thank all my elected colleagues and the executive and staff here, Pauline and Joanne and Kevin. You know, I'll give them a thanks on Monday, but just to thank you all for your cooperation. It's great to be able to finish the agenda and look, we'll see you all hopefully and everybody keep safe. And we'll see you at our AGM on Monday. Okay, thanks.
And well done on the meetings you held. You were cool and calm at all stages.